And we're rolling them out. Okay.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to call the Landowner Planning Board meeting to order. Start by a roll call. Kane Flower?
Right, Kane.
John Derkendron?
Roger Moore.
Rich Pennon.
Ted Lloyd.
On the agenda for this evening, we have approval minutes from September 12th. We also have minutes for the sidewalk of August the 8th and minutes of August 8th meeting. Item two will be application for Kimball gravel pit. Item three will be proposed revisions for land use ordinances. Item four, planners business, other business, and public comments. Everybody got the minutes? Let's start with August 8th, the sidewalk.
Move to accept.
Yep. Second.
All in favor?
John Derkendron abstains, I would not present.
Minutes of August 8th. We'll start with the meet, draft, minute meetings. If anybody has a chance to review those and then send them out again.
Move to accept.
Second.
All in favor?
Yep.
All opposed? And let's see, the sidewalk minutes of August 8th.
We just did it. We're going to do it on September 12th.
Yeah, sidewalk of September 12th.
I think it was the sidewalk.
No. Of the drop minutes. Yeah, okay.
Move to accept.
All in favor? All opposed?
We need a second.
Yep.
Sorry.
The majority. Anything that comes over unless you have somebody else there?
No, that's more than enough, thank you.
All right. Item two, Kimball gravel pit renewal conditional use permit.
Good evening. My name is Chip Lee. I'm the Aggregate Resource Manager for Sargent Corporation. Good night, I'd ask you to request a renewal of our conditional use permit for the Kimball gravel pit out on Route 111. Map 20 lot 7. It's owned by John and Diana Kimball. And the lot is about 78 acres in size. We originally got approval from the Landowner Planning Board back in 1991. And we've been renewing the conditional use permit for every three years since then. We're also permitted with Maine D E P. And they inspect it on a regular basis to ensure compliance. The pit's been used on an intermittent basis. We have used it since the last time we were here. However, the landowner has taken a few loads of material out, but not cement. It's consistent with the uses in the area. It's been used that way for the last 22 years. It's consistent with comprehensive plan, safe vehicle access, no issues with water supply. Sewerage is handled by public toilets from there in there. No noise, but that's the only that would cause problems with neighbors. We're heavily regulated by OSHA, EMCA, Maine D E P. Physical characteristics, average internally drained, slow properly. They have a performance bond that's in place, amount of $50,000. Will not constitute a public nuisance. Again, we're advised by all the regulations that we have. Anything else you need to know, if you want happy to provide? If you want to schedule a sidewalk? Or if you'd like to approve the plans, you may wait.
Anybody have any comments?
Let the record show that Tom has joined our meeting.
Anybody have any comments?
We just think it's been our policy to do sidewalks. So I think we should do one as quickly as possible.
Question, do you know when the last time the D E P was on site?
Uh, yes. The spring. Should be in the past, did you get that? I sent a copy of Christina Stacy's report. Christina Stacy, who was inspector with Maine D E P, was on site April 10th. And D E P's in substantial compliance. And it's actually the size she had was 3.6 acres at the end of August. Out of a 5 acre permitted.
Correct.
I don't have that.
You don't? I emailed it.
Yeah. Check that, I'm checking. I don't have the, I know I saw it, but I. I'll get that.
Yeah, I'll look. I need to have another copy, you don't have.
No. I've already read it.
I also emailed a copy of the, our renewed agreement with Kimball to show standards. Yeah, if you want happy to schedule a sidewalk, can you sign your mind?
I just have a question. Last time we were on site, everything looked good. I'm assuming since you said that there was been no activity except for the landowner, that the site conditions are essentially the same as they were previously.
Yes.
When we visited last, we did have some issues with fueling station in September. Have there been any changes since then?
No, we haven't, we haven't done anything. I mean, we built that liner, did have a tear in it, but we haven't, we haven't used it. When we go back into, get some equipment there and use it again, we'll replace that liner.
Anybody else have any questions?
In terms of point, you said they always got some abstraction. Have any idea what point is in terms of the ordinance?
Two loads, three loads, minutes.
Negative.
Point, yeah, but yeah. You took a little bit of surface gravel that we had already talked about.
You also note that nothing is different than it was the last time.
More or less, for the sake of saying it was used. It's just, I mean, uh.
It had been used.
No, no, I'm just saying, the minimum amount over the period of time, it has been used, but for the sake of saying it's been used.
Correct.
A minimum amount.
Correct, correct.
Not so it's not inactive.
Correct.
I think this, uh, sidewalk, that's a petition. I can. Yeah. So I make a motion that we do a sidewalk at the next scheduled meeting, which I believe is October 10th.
Have a second on that?
Sure.
Alls in favor?
Thank you. It's just, it's, I know, back shots, yeah, but.
So.
Yeah, we should verify.
Yeah, all opposed?
I thought you raised your hand for approval. Okay. You spread them here. Okay, so we're going to set it for October what?
October 10th.
Aye. But then it started to get darker earlier.
At 6:00.
Probably dark at that time already.
6:00, 7:00. 5:00.
No. I won't be able to. I guess it's, I guess so.
5:00, 6:00. It's still a little light at 6:00, isn't it?
Right now sunset, sunset is at 6:12. Sunset's at 6:12. Presently.
Be early, maybe before 6:00.
What are the chances of a Saturday? Shouldn't take very long.
There's a bit of a sunset.
If there's been no changes, we could do that walk pretty quick.
Yeah, that's why I don't think it'll take very long. We need to do a sidewalk, that's our policy.
It's a Saturday.
I give it a final.
I can't do this week, because I'm not fine as soon as I can do any other Saturday.
So next.
What about the 5th, or the 12th?
Saturday the 5th.
Next month's the weekend.
That's the weekend, well.
It's the weekend, the 12th.
Ted, I presume that everything is in order for them to be on the agenda?
Yes.
At the next meeting?
Yeah, we'll have to have a public hearing, and I need 10 days to that. So this will not be, the public hearing won't be at the next meeting. That's really, sidewalk I don't have to do.
So Aubrey's curve has to get this sidewalk done prior to the next meeting.
Yeah, absolutely.
The Saturday the 5th, good for everybody? Something?
Yep. 9:05 Saturday morning, October 5th.
Yep, all right.
9:00?
Suppose we have to amend the motion. Because we said we can get that.
Well, let's vote on it and make a move.
No, we already voted on the motion to have that. So we need, we need to amend that motion. So make a motion to amend the sidewalk to be on October 5th at 9:00 a.m.
Second.
All in favor?
All opposed? Any others?
Let's give us enough time, give you enough time to put this on the agenda that week?
Yeah.
To do the public hearing and get it all done.
Yeah, I can. I only need three days. I'm going to schedule a public hearing. We haven't gone back there yet.
No, that's, that's why I was asking.
Okay.
I make a motion, we schedule a public hearing for October 10th, the meeting of October 10th.
Second.
All in favor?
All opposed? Go in favor.
All right, so nice. Do you need me there to talk to you?
Only if somebody complains.
No?
You need a sidewalk?
Yeah. I might get them down.
Ask the board, I don't, I don't know the map, I don't know.
It's not funny, you can still work.
Okay, it's up to the app, whether you want to be present.
The board has given the site.
Oh, yeah, they made it so. The only difference is John has played on his property, but he just had 78 acres, so plenty of money.
All right, take a spark. Well, it's more.
Believe the gate, the gate's unlocked, or I'll give you the combination of the gate.
I'm just asking a question, instead of parking around, don't bother that.
Oh, no, it's fine.
That's right.
Yeah, it's Saturday morning.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next item of business, the standard use ordinances, revisions, downtown business district. Let's. Very left off, internal circulation. Internal circulation connectivity. Just so you all know, we have an updated versions up to date, today, for September 26th. Where we stand, this is compilation of all the stuff that we've done so far. I honestly don't know what to do with special exceptions, because we didn't eliminate special exceptions in the 14.9 section. But it sounded like you didn't want to do the 733, where you use special exceptions in the DB2, so I'm not quite sure what you want to do with that. Well, we've left, you had standards one, we could go over on the special exceptions as a general use elsewhere in town, but we didn't want to use it in the DB2. Am I, am I correct in that? Because that's the way I read the minutes. Because if so, I'd knock it right out of here. I think if you go, well, it should be in the minutes, I think it was in the minutes of
No, it wasn't 12th, that was the, uh, on the.
August 8th? 733?
733, special exception following use through, but as a special exception in the DB1, it's not used. Plan misuse of laws.
It's not here.
It's not here, it's the 12th.
No, no, Steve.
What is it, the 12th of September?
25th, anybody got the 25th?
Okay.
No, we approved it as the last.
Well, anyways.
We even the 26th.
Consequently, the simple fact is, I don't know quite what to do with that. You're going to have to tell me what to do with that. If you're not going to do special exceptions, then I need to knock it out. So I'll leave that.
My opinion, you need to knock it out, I don't think, I don't, I don't like special exceptions.
Well, the thing was that you didn't want in the DB2, which we could do. And I, in so note your objection to it. The board said they wanted that, they, the actual, the actual minutes basically said that the board will contemplate what standards, what other standards they would want for special exceptions in the town. That's what annuals says in the minutes. What other, what other criteria, because it was the six criteria that we proposed.
Yeah, we lost special exception without precedent.
Yeah, and that's what 14, section 14 is the criteria for special exceptions. And then 733 is the application of special exceptions in the DB2 district. And Richard's right, basically on that, on that 25th, the board was, was not inclined towards special exceptions in the DB2. But we wanted to consider, reconsider, we didn't want to reconsider, wanted to consider special exceptions in somewhere in there. And I just wasn't sure whether to knock it out of the DB2 at this point. That's why we see it in there in parentheses.
So, Mr. Chairman, which one are we looking at? I mean, I'm confused.
733.
On page two.
Page two, 733.
No, I missed a few meetings, but has the board already approved of special, what the criteria would be?
No.
No.
No, just that.
We're leading to not having special exceptions in the DB2. And we're going to address whether or not we're going to get it in town at all.
Okay.
Yeah, what will the conditions be?
But I think, I think at this point, just to settle off the DB2, do we want them in the DB2 or not? And if we decide that we, we want them, then we have to address how we want to deal with it. If we say no, we can look at the rest of the town later, in terms of whether or not there should, there should be exceptions. But I think just to finish off the DB2, we should address that issue. And I'm opposed to special exceptions. I mean, if we're going to, if we're going to say that there's an exception, it's not special. Let's put it in the ordinance and, and make it a permitted use.
Do you want a motion?
I, I'll make a motion that we exclude special exceptions from the DB2 area. It's not an allowed option.
Would planned mixed use developments? You made a motion, you need a second, sorry. I'll second for construction.
Okay.
Would planned mixed use developments be pulled under the conditional uses?
No, it was designed, basically, the board decided they didn't like the idea of a planned mixed use development that was essentially a contract zone kind of arrangement. So he said that we want to look at it as a special exception. That it had to be something unique that was going to occur, that would warrant, that would warrant the consideration of it. Conditional use, as you all know, would mean if you meet the conditions, it's a permitted use. Special exception, uh, no. It could be considered as, it has to be remarkable in some way or manner in order to be granted a special exception. And that remark, that degree of remarkable ability, if you will, is something the board has a lot of latitude to determine. So that was the way that, actually, I think that that made that suggestion of a special exception, because that, that would not, that would provide some framework without having the Wild West approach of a contract zone and the automatic approval of planned unit development. So it was a way to, the board had the discretion to say, no, we're not going to do that. Because, you know, it's not, it's not, it's not a good enough project for us. Give you that opportunity, which is rare, the planning boards have, they're saying, that's not good enough for us. They want something better, not this, 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 this. So that's why we went through this convoluted special exception concept. But as, as Mr. Genonius said, he doesn't believe that exceptions are a good idea, permitted and non-permitted is a little ago. And I think the board, the board agreed with you on the 25th. But since we kept the other section, I was wondering if I should knock that out too, the section 14. Or if, whether, whether PUDs will now, they will not be allowed in the area, and we will not have special exceptions, I guess, at all.
Anybody else have comment? Tom?
I don't, I don't know if I carry any good reasoning to keep it in there. I'm not sure, we have a lot of discussion, but I forget what, what the benefit would be.
The only thing we were trying to do is try and come up with a mechanism in which, you know, we have standards, we have lots standards for traditional development, we have standards that will be used for traditional commercial subdivision, or a large project that's, that's planned as a, as a, as a unit. Like you would with a shopping, like a shopping center or a mall or something like that. It's a larger scale than we're talking about here, but. But if somebody wanted to come in and do a project in which they integrate residential and business and commercial and recreational and put it in all, one planned area, sort of like a new neighborhood, if you will, that we really wouldn't, it would be tough to do it with our current regulations, because it doesn't allow the kind of flexibility that, that we would want. Because we're eliminating, as you recall, we're prohibiting multifamily. We'll note that we have no multifamily duplexes in that district. And this would allow it under certain circumstances. And the circumstances would be defined by you, not by the ordinance, but by the planning board, it would be, you've got to give you an opportunity, it was a good enough project that you liked, that you could do it.
So is special exemption, exceptions, that's another way of, another term for planned use development?
You could put whatever you want in there. I mean, it could be concrete, if you wanted to put that in there. But what it does is, they have to meet a certain criteria in order to be granted that special exemption status. That criteria is whatever you want to make it out to be. We had six, six criteria that we, we played with to begin with, just to begin with the discussion. What, what did you want that was remarkable? Now, you could do that with a planned unit development, but you can't take every factor into consideration when the planned unit ordinance. With special exception, it's almost like a contract zone that you can, you can reject. But at least there's standards, there's some, some basic standards. In contract zones, whatever. If it sounds good, we'll go with it. In a, in a way, you know, it would be like if you had, if we didn't have to go to the town, and John, John kept bringing this up, you don't have to go to the town, what we did at Case or Cecil cottages would have been contract zones. Those would have been contract agreements. Planning board chose to take those directly to the, to the people. And in the exempt ordinance, change is to accommodate.
Mr. Chairman. Would that, special exceptions be used in such a way that if it doesn't have a defined definition? Because where we run into the past, something wasn't allowed because it didn't have a definition. I mean, using that as a description point.
If you wrote it in and made that one of the items that was available, any use, I mean, you could write in there any use, that would be sick.
No, I'm just saying, because beforehand, we had places where stuff existed, but turned out was not existing because it did not have a classification of a definition. Because if it didn't have a definition, it was not allowed.
No. CEO made determination.
CEO always makes his determination. We had a situation where.
The CEO made a determination that it didn't fit, but the CEO made determination, that's in the ordinance.
Are you referring to omitted uses? If it wasn't listed in the use table, not necessarily a definition.
Right, that's why I say special usage.
So if it's not specifically listed, it's not permitted?
Yeah, that's what.
The newer.
Right. That's the newer. It's omitted uses.
Part, part of.
We don't see the question.
But part of the rationale for that is that, here's the list of the things that we would, that we think should be permitted here. If it's not on this list, we don't think it should be permitted. And yes, there are cer, there will be something that comes up that we have no clue as to what it is.
That's what I'm saying.
Sooner or later, a widget maker's going to come to town, and we don't know what kind of widget he wants to make. We don't, we can't define that ahead of time. What we've done in the past is write up the ordinance and take it to the town and say, okay, this guy wants to make widgets, let the town make that decision. As opposed to creating a special exception that says widget makers can do whatever it is that they want to do. The problem to me becomes if we say that the widget maker can come to town, well, what about the guy that makes flibberdy gibbids? Can he come to town too? Are we just being ar, we don't want, right, we don't want them in town, we just want this one specific. So let the town make the decision as to whether or not something should be there.
Yeah, and I agree with that. There is a way to still have, have it allowed, like we've seen with Case.
Right.
But I think that's better than having six of, or seven of us making the call.
It becomes very judgmental on us if we make it, and if we decide against somebody.
Right.
It's going to be problematic.
Yeah.
And it would be problematic if we decided for it, because the town, then the town might go level, you shouldn't have done that.
Yes. We're going to have.
Making the tough calls when you guys get the free bucks. And making the tough calls is, it's not a permitted use.
Yeah, the only argument against that is if somebody comes to town, and they've come here in January, and they've got to wait till July, they get to the town meeting, so in some respects, you may be discouraging of this, but I hope highly that we just can't be arbitrary in our decision to either law a missile or something.
And if you, if you came here in January, it would take us until June to craft up the proper wording anyway.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, the one reason why we, we consider this, and I understand what Mr. General is saying, you know, which is, which is, he's got it nailed, absolutely. The only reason this is ever proposed is to, is in the competitive world of trying to attract kind of projects the town is looking for, that often, those who are proposing a development plan or a development proposal, time is money. And, and the sooner they can get in, the sooner they can make it, make a decision whether this land can in fact support this, and I can get a support from the planning board, and I can move my way through there, that piece of land is, that town, whatever land, whatever town this land is in, is going to be the recipient of that. They're going to go with the path of least resistance, basically. And if we have a situation where we're requiring, let's say, you come in July and you've got to wait till next June, to get the zoning ordinance passed, that we're going to pass. So we're going to, we're going to take ourselves out of competition with some of our neighbors for some projects that we might want. There's also the recent projects we don't want. I think MERC is the best example of the path of least resistance. If, if that came for us, it might seem like a great tax revenue, but would it be what the rest of the town wants? We might agree, this is a good way the town can make, but I'd rather have the whole town be in on that decision.
I would, I'm just looking at 733. The only exception that is in here is the P market. Well, if, so anybody that came with anything else still couldn't get in unless it was a P market. And if we're, if we think that, that that's a good idea, then put. And if we're, if we think that, that that's a good idea, then put P-mat into conditional uses and don't create a special exception for it.
P-mat?
Planned mixed-use development. And the reason we did that was because that's what we're discussing. When we had, we're going down the list of other uses that we would consider. That was the one, that was really the, the target that we were really debating at that time. That's why I just put the P-mat in there. Sure, the board will come up with some other uses. Had we decided to go that route, but quite frankly, it wasn't going to put in too much effort into building a whole new ordinance if the, if the board wasn't going to buy into it. Because the board was sketchy at the time when we discussed it. And, and the motion was made not to. So, if that's the case, then I think we should also get rid of the entire, if the board is not favorable to it in one district, then it should be favorable to it in any district. So I would agree with that.
Any other comments?
If you put P-mat in, is that a substitute for this?
Yeah. Yes, it would, but that, we, we did this because the board did not want to put it in conditional uses.
Right, because planned mixed-use development, it's the same thing. It, it just goes back, we're, we're all excited about layering on regulation after regulation after regulation, and it's wonderful because we feel we're doing a good job, but then we want to say at the same time, well, 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 if you've got a really good project, it doesn't apply to you. And, you know, you can't do that. Either you've got regulations or you don't. So if you want to attract business, then get rid of these regulations that exclude businesses. If you don't want to attract business, put them in, but don't say, well, if, if we like you, you can come on in.
No disrespect, John, but if I follow your theory, then we don't have zoning laws. We don't have them because we're not going to restrict anybody from doing anything. Which means my next door neighbor could have a nuclear waste facility because it's allowed. Rather extreme example, but he could do whatever he wanted to the detriment of my property.
Well, but the point I'm making, I'm not saying dismiss all regulations, but we've got so many of them that we are trying to find loopholes for businesses that we like.
I'm not, I just take it out.
No, I know you're not, but that's what this, this special exception is to me. So if you need to find a loophole, there's something wrong with the level of your regulation. That's my thinking. So you should either have the regulations or not have the regulations, make a decision, but don't say, we have them except if we like you.
I'm, I'm not sure there's any uses in here that are, that this would permit. It's not the uses, it's, it's the actual site development process and the relationship of lots, of buildings and lots to each other. Setbacks between buildings and so forth, that's what's really being affected. The uses, I don't think there's, not a lot of uses that aren't in, that are, that are not allowed in this district. Maybe certain, certain heavy industries aren't allowed. I would say that's about it. But I mean, warehousing and distribution and trucking is in there somewhere. But we have, we have a lot of uses that currently are not permitted in that district. So we've, we've opened a tremendous number of uses that weren't there before. So it's not we're limiting uses. What we're doing is we're trying to amplify flexibility in design. That's all we're trying to do. Allow somebody not to have to have a hundred-foot frontage for every single building you put sand in, they could, you know.
Under special conditions.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I think we can call the board on this.
Go for the discussion.
It is a motion and a second.
The motion was?
To eliminate 733 special exceptions from the DB2 zone. All in favor? All opposed?
I'm not abstaining.
Okay. Fine in favor, body of sayings. Okay. All right, I would assume also, Mr. Chairman, that they will, we will therefore get rid of section 14-6. Which is, is the, the formation, basically it's the formation, it's not in this pack. It was the, the background of regulation established, uh, excuse me, special exceptions in this unit, as essential. And then, no, excuse me, it was in the land use, it was in the additional use process. So, that's what I was...
So that's automatically going to be eliminated?
Well, yeah, we, I would assume if you're not going to allow it in one district, unless, unless you want to allow the same thing in another district. It sounds like it's a philosophical issue and therefore we should just get rid of...
I need a motion for a second.
What's the section, 14?
14-6.
Okay. Then I'll, I'll make the motion that we remove special exceptions in all areas within the ordinance per section 14-6.
Grab a second on that?
I'll, I'll second it.
That's basically, because what we, what we just did was take it out of the DB2, we're not going to take it out of the town completely. There are no special exceptions.
I, I know I seconded it, but just for discussion, I'm not clear what 14-6 is.
It's special exceptions.
That's all it is?
It's what it is, it's in the criteria for a special exception.
Now, question. Okay. Somewhere along the way here, even though we turned and did 733 or whatever else that, on our bucket list anywhere for criteria of specifications, where are we going to have maximum height?
That's already in the space and bulk table.
Space and bulk table, and that's the section that we just removed for under special exceptions.
No, it isn't, no, it's not.
That's where I...
It's section, yeah, section seven, yeah, it's section 733, the special exceptions. Section seven, I, I, it's numbered incorrectly? No, it isn't. It's numbered correctly because I anticipated you were going to throw it out. Oh, okay.
That's why I was trying to...
Yeah, the motion was to remove 733 special exceptions, nothing else.
No, actually not to remove 733, to remove special exceptions.
Yes.
That's where I was confused, that's why I stayed and asked the question.
That's, that's a good point, Marty, because I didn't even realize that was 733.
That's why...
Was it originally? It was originally 732 and space and bulk 734. But given the last vote, but, and I'm sorry, I didn't mean to rehash this, but it was so up in the air from the, from the July 25th, I wasn't sure exactly which way you wanted to go. You reaffirmed it, and now 14-6 is gone, so that's gone.
We have a vote on 14-6. Any further discussion on 14-6?
Now clarify for me, is that townwide or just in the DB2?
Townwide.
Townwide.
It's townwide, it's criteria for special exceptions. We're not eliminating special exceptions townwide with this vote. We're eliminating the criteria for special exceptions.
No, you're, you're eliminating special exceptions.
Okay.
Get rid of them all.
So there will be none other than any other zoning district?
Right. Initial use, permitted use, that's it.
So the motion was to, to get rid of townwide?
Yes, that's what you seconded.
Any further discussion, all in favor?
Where, where does this other, would apply?
No way. I mean, where, does it apply now? No, we're only talking about in the DB2 district, but it was set up so we put it in other districts. And feeling important is that special exception is a legitimate mechanism in which to legislate land uses.
Okay, because we talked about, turn around like, down on the lower section of Townhouse Corner.
Yeah, that's going to have to be separate question.
Okay. I didn't know if that might apply into special, that's why I'm asking the question. Do we have other zones that we haven't created per se yet? So we don't have to come back and redress this over again in case? I'm asking a question.
Yeah, this would eliminate it from consideration for other zones.
We need it townwide. So what we're going to have are permitted uses and conditional uses. Okay.
Any further discussion? A vote on a motion?
We have a question.
Yes. If, if somebody came in and they wanted a special exception, would they have to go for a town meeting? It was still, the town meeting was still... If somebody came with something that everybody thought was good, but your hands were tied because you couldn't do it, then he'd have to go for a town meeting. Which if it was good, then the town would, town would go for it.
Okay, I have a motion, a second, have a vote on it, all in favor? All opposed? Fine in favor, want to oppose?
I'm not taking notes.
Marty, Marty.
Marty doesn't oppose. Okay, thank you. Now, that was supposed to be a quick aside. Mr. Chairman, I, dealing with internal circulation and connectivity between properties, I think a little bit of a worry here for that. At the last meeting, I think we discussed that issue of connectivity. The concern was, do we want to plot a road now? Right now, the way it's written in the DB1 and will, I mean, soon also be used in DB2, would basically say that it's encouraged that parking lots be connected between the building properties and potential for a road. And I think Alfred brought up the issue of, well, you know, if we're going to have a road, maybe we should plot such a road. Or give it, give property owners an idea if such a road were possible, and that would be good. You asked me to bring, bring in a map so you could take a look at it and see where such roads would be possible, if, if at all. And, sorry, this is really good for public consumption, because of the scale of the map and the darkness of the area. But what I would say is that, unless the board, geez, how am I going to do this? Palm is a building like two miles, so, large of an area. Essentially, give you a...
Oh.
Nobody's going to be able to see. Yeah, if you guys can all sit over there underneath your camera, that'd be great. Orientation. Maybe we'll do it this way. We'll go north-south, okay? Orientation, campground road, into the districts here that Cyril's at. Here's a river right here. This location of the river. River Road, Limerick Road, Route 1, Campground Log Cal. I put in both the lots, the identified wetlands, streams, and buildings. Now, unfortunately, we don't have a level of GIS where I can locate buildings, I have to do it by aerial only. Hence the darkness of the map that shows land cover in separately this time.
I thought that was tree cover.
It is tree cover, ground cover. Yes, tree cover all through here. But we do have a lot of lines on here, we do have the streams, we do have site constraints, I was going to put top topography on because it's not going that bad of a constraint in through here and it just, what is it, that'd be worse. But as you can see, what we have is we have, basically the, the area that looks the best for any kind of road planning, if we wanted to do any road planning, is going to be in this area here. It's going to be in the east side of the, of the Route 1 corridor. The west side of the Route 1 corridor is just very, very, very difficult. Reason being that we have Limerick Road here, very tight development pattern in here, a lot of, it doesn't show it, unfortunately, natural, natural wetlands doesn't pick it up, but we have a lot of wet area that's right in this corridor, right down through here. Some good lands back in here. There might be some potential in here, but quite frankly, it would have to be way behind this area here. It would have to be behind Limerick Road. The area behind Route 1, in this area here, we have, we have a lot of mixed uses in here and a lot of development patterns that are kind of, make it difficult to have any kind of logical road system that's through here. We do have the Strickland property here, and I know that in talking to George in the past, he was very interested in pulling a road out behind here. But there's not a lot of, a lot of potential because we have a residential subdivision right in here. This is the, what is that, that's reading west, yeah, this is the west, west property and through here. That's all residential, this is road residential, this is Sam's, Sam's road right through here. So we have static area here and those, that's Atlantic mini storage. So there's not a lot of potential for any kind of road system per se. You'd have to cross your way in here, this is residential. And then we get into this large parcel here, and this is the Cynthia Hopkins parcel, famous village center parcel, as we all recall. Kind of a, a force unto itself, it's about 50 acres of, with dual, with actually multiple access points, both on Route 1 and Campground. Not a lot of potential for connection here. I mean, you could, but I'm not sure you're going to build a lot of road without any useful frontage on it.
The only thing, sir, on that, unless you came off Sam's road. Because it turned out Sam's road only goes so far and onto the right-hand side of that, okay? All the way down, there is no development. On the left-hand side of that, it's residential. And also, at the same time, how far are we considering DB2 to go, depth-wise?
DB2 go, well, DB2 goes all the way, goes like this right now, through here.
Right now?
That's the way you're proposing it right now.
Well, what is the depth? That's what I'm trying to ask.
Oh, boy. It varies, Marty, it goes everywhere.
Are we just following property lines?
Following property lines. We're following property lines again, the DB2. So we're following up through here, then we're following Cynthia Hopkins. For instance, we're going to take all the parcel here, which is going to be way in from, let's say, Sam's here, and that's that house they had the end of, the road there. This, this section is going to extend beyond that, there are some wetland constraints, so I mean, it's good to know what's going to happen in here. And Mark Welch is here too, he's always expressed an interest in coming out, out this way. So the bigger problem is we've got Sam's, Sam's road right in here. That's, that's one of the biggest constraints right there. In a lot of land, where you're not going to even build road without having frontage on that road, without, you pay for road without getting a return in terms of subdivision or, or business. So it's going to be tough, it's going to be tough back in here. I think we'd have to work more on parking lot connectivity to actually build a road. I'm not saying it's impossible, but, I mean, if the board would be interested in doing that, one of the ways would be to connect, connect Limerick directly to, to, let's say, use Strickland through here, or use Welch. I don't know if he really wants to use his, his thoroughfare through it because, I mean, his, his operation is pretty, pretty well-contained here and it's, and he has no, there are no signs of him limiting his activity. In fact, he's going to probably expand it. So, really, we, the only real way we can get in through here, besides Sam's, I mean, we could do Sam's, Marty. You know, but Sam's is also a private way, too. So, you have to go this way.
What about where the farm is?
The farm.
That's half the Stricklands.
That's not Stricklands, this is Stricklands.
The Strickland that comes right off all of them.
This is Strickland right through here, this is the, this is his mother-in-law's place here. Comes right here by his brothers and then out into these parcels here. This parcel's actually pretty good, this one's got some wet, this one's got a lot of wetlands on this side.
But the next property over, from where Strickland lane is...
Define what's over. This way?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, that's a farm.
Is, is the old horse park.
Yeah, that's a farm. You may not put the DB district over there.
I'm just saying that it has access rather parallel to Sam's.
Because really, if we look at our commercial section, really ends right about in here, and this really starts in very residential. And Strickland's, as you know, is residential, this lawyer here, his brother's is, his brother's is home operation, contract to storage, kind of thing. So what I'm saying is that we, it's, it's kind of difficult, I mean, let's say if George wanted to... let's say if George wanted to, if Strickland wanted to do some development back here, certainly they can come in through this way. That would be a beneficial way. Whether we would want them to continue or we would propose going through to Sam's Road? Is it Sam's Road or Sam's Rock? Sims Road. Yeah, Sims Road. Sam's Road, and that's possible. This one out here, I think this is taken for a development of, planned development. And actually, I've been talking to Cynthia Hopkins, and she said, she marketed down in Massachusetts as a planned development, used to develop. So that would, everything on this side, there's not very much, we have this one large parcel in here, but then we have very small parcels up in there, through here. So this is the key. If George wanted to go that way, then we would link into that, that'd be terrific, and that would be that. In the back here...
Who would build those roads?
That was going to be my question.
Well, that's the whole issue.
If we put them on paper, who's going to be responsible for them?
You can't put them on paper unless the landowners want them there.
Well...
Nor do I can.
Not nor do I can. In other towns, you can. What we're doing, what the landowners in every one of these situations, if we want connectivity, to try and keep as much curb, to limit the number of curb cuts on Route 1 as possible, for a variety of reasons, one of which is, of course, the question of urban compact. Now, we're nowhere near the threshold for urban compact. We have to double our population before we get into that trouble. But there will come a time when we will double our population. The issue is, do we want, how much do we want in terms of curb cuts down here? And I think it's been stated more than once before, I think John Bell said at the last meeting, that you guys won't have to go into one driveway and have to go out to Route 1 to go to the next store over, to the next business over. But actually, in some cases, and pretty much on this side, there's more, there's more potential for the idea of linking driveways and linking some sort of back road. Now, a developer or develop, anybody who would be interested, we're not here, but anybody would be interested in developing back in through here, you've got a large tracks of lane. They're going to need to be able to get in there and move around between. I think we have more potential for putting a road back in this area than we do here. I think the idea of putting a road between, let's say, this part of the DV1, because this is the DV1 boundary right through here, putting a road back there is just not feasible and not desirable. If the roads are going to be for the larger pieces of property, that's what I think. So I'm not even, I'm not taking this as serious news, I'm taking this seriously right here. The other thing is that when we get over in this area here, I'm not sure I want connectivity to, obviously, we don't want to put any, we would prefer not to make any connections to the residential streets. Campground's going to be a residential street, excuse me, Lockham's a residential street. We've got business up in here, but it stops right here. And this is all residential, and I don't think we're in any position there where we'd be making anything about residential. There's a lot of homes in through here, and they're going to stay homes. We've got multifamily over here, and they're self-contained. Certainly, Old Post Road has always been your concern. This whole idea of expanding the DV district. Old Post Road has been your greatest concern, because that's a residential road. It is a moderate growth, it's an R2. So it's a, it's a moderate growth area as you designate in your comp plan. And this board has been very concerned about if the trade-off between expanding the business district this way is to ensure that they maintain their residential character. And the residential, also the residential trip generation they're going to get on that road. So I don't think there's any logical, or reasonable, or politically feasible way of linking any road that you want to contemplate with Old Post. So these two are out. So any road's going to have to be internal, and it's going to have to come in, in and onto Route 1. And there aren't a lot of them, a lot of places to do them. Certainly, if the users wanted to come in and go back through here, they could. We get to the campground, well, we've got a campground here, where's where is it?
You got two.
We got a campground here. Obviously, I don't want to connect here, I don't want to connect here, so we've got to come up through here. Well, obviously, we're not going to go through Weers. Weers around Old Ford, not going to come through the campground. So we're looking at probably coming in this area here, through the town lane, because this is the town lane. That's the...
That's on the move?
Yeah. That was on the planning board for about 10 years, between 1970 or ours till middle 80s. And the problem that we've had then, I think you guys have the same problem, is the central storage. A lot of business back, we kept on the board, they would come in and says, do you have central storage? No. Two, three is on the road, they're going to be building the business. Work on the central storage for myself, myself, before you start designing the road. That's possible.
I'm working on that, but, okay? That's not off the table, that's back on the plate.
That's the problem, that we've had back in those days. And I think still today.
I agree with you 100%, otherwise, we're just playing SimCity here, we're just having fun. We're not doing anything realistic. Without that, so we've got the water.
Yeah, I know that.
That's a big plus. So we're back to fire flows, and we're back to reliable pressures. And we thank our friends at the seasonal cottages for that. So now we're going to work on sort.
You have storage, you have no problem.
We'll always have problems. But we have, we open up doors.
Yeah.
We open up doors. Now, what we're just trying to do at this point is, we're going to say we want connectivity, and we want it between parking lots. As we get bigger developments, as this area starts filling in, people see some opportunities, especially in this area over here, we're going to want to make sure that they plan them together. That, you know, if you're going to put a project right in this area here, and a project down in here, that, and rather than have you both go out and be next to each other, you want them to connect.
Yeah.
It's because, A, obviously, that increases circulation, it's much more convenient for the users.
For the both.
And it's also, it's also convenient for the property owners, as long as they get along. So...
Once you have storage coming down Route 1.
It will, it will, it will increase the potential that this area is going to be under pressure. You're absolutely correct. Until, you know, otherwise, we'd be looking 30, 40, 15 years down the line.
All right, Ted.
Yes, sir.
That section that you were speaking about for development is basically, right now, at this time, is landlocked. Because, because the fact is, the depth of some of these, okay? Only are possibly accessible through a present business, or some of the property is also coming off Old Post Road.
Right.
So I mean, you have to be able to unlock, so it's not landlocked.
Right. And that's, you just put your finger on it already.
But turn out, even definition, there is no piece of property in Maine that's considered landlocked. You should have a right where they say, quote unquote.
Except in Chris, right?
No, I've read through that before.
Well, then, there's nothing to say if somebody wanted to develop a piece of land behind in the DV2, that they couldn't also acquire land in the DV1 to get back to it. And that's what we're really actually trying to encourage. You can get a good chunk of land back here, buy stuff up front, connect it to the stuff in the back, because, quite frankly, as you can see, there's no development back in here. And yeah, it's not that bad. I mean, some of the soils went great, you get a lot of numbers and scantex, non-hydrogen numbers, I believe. But you still have a, you have a lot of land. And if you can, you have limited, you have a limited number of access points that you can get to. And but, if you can connect to one of these properties up here, and there's a lot of properties here that would probably be saleable, that's where you can get in. And then you make the connections between them, that just improves the availability of this area here. The question is, where do we jump in? At what point do we jump in? As Dan says, we advocate, we plan it right now. Well, you know, who knows what's going to go in there? I mean, it's real tough to plan it, to lay out a quarter and start planning and financing it, and coming up. We can do that, but we're also limiting what the potential is. I think it's something we're going to have to do as things go. I think it's going to be the process of muddling through, quite frankly. Unless you feel strongly that we should put something right through here. This area here, around here, come out. John Hughes wants to come out this way?
Sure.
Oh, I think before, if anything else, if you said where the town property is.
Right.
Okay. That there would be an access off of Route 1. Because the depth, I'm not sure what is the depth of that piece of property.
It's an expensive road to build there, Marty.
Yeah, it's like, just to get through decent land, there's an hole up there, it's about 700 feet square. Would Phil suggest that, do you, or not?
I don't remember, but we just walked it this week. You know, there's a big gully, there's, it's very expensive to build, build a road there.
He said about $500 per linear foot.
Around a bus a foot, yeah.
That's, that's have to build.
If you did the road in the common scheme of development, you're going to have over three acres of impervious. So somebody has to own the permitting on that. So you can't, like, in other words, if the first guy in has two acres, and then the next guy, and you put it on to the private owner to permit it, somebody's going to get saddled with, you know, a $40,000, $50,000 permit to bring it through DEP for impervious, you know, sight law. So I don't see how you can do it without doing a master plan from Army Corps, DEP, and all of that.
That goes for stormwater, too. Then incrementally, you have to meet stormwater standards as you go. So you have to develop and set aside land for communal stormwater ponds, potentially, you know, communal that would have shared easements, just like the subject system. You don't have to invest in those and construct those as you go. They sort of overbuild, assuming the next section of road would be going into stormwater.
Then I got, then we would have to sell, basically, the road. The town would have to take that on or go into a partnership. Probably go into a partnership. Hence the desire for P is still 100%.
Always that plug.
So the question, no, the question is, I mean, to develop this open, a lateral road is going to increase the potential here dramatically versus having to negotiate to get into this backland that's landlocked. So this is landlocked from every direction except you.
If there was sewer, it'd be an awesome place to have an industrial park.
Business park, absolutely.
Business, yeah.
Don't say that, that would scare you maybe.
Yeah.
It's a business park. Yes, and you know, the issue is sewer. So if you were to assume that we're going to do sewer, then we should start planning.
I don't think, I don't think the town can afford to do the road and sewer. A sewer is great, like you said, a sewer is great. But I think it needs to be, like I've been preaching for a long time, kind of live and let live. Look at the building that is down the corner of Route 1 and Old Post Road. Champagne's new office, I think it is. Then look at Chad's Champion Auto Body. Look at how he dressed that whole thing up, that didn't look that good a year ago. Now it looks just great. And everybody's making their property look better, and that's just going to sell more properties. And like John said, if we put too many restrictions on people trying to come in and buy and build, they're not going to come in. And if you put a road in, and it's going to cost, by the time the people get it, probably a thousand bucks a foot for the frontage, plus the price of the property, they're going to say, heck, but I'm going to Bitterford, I'm going to Kennybunk, I'm going to New Hampshire or somewhere that they can afford it. We're going to, we're going to make ourselves an unaffordable place to sell any lots to industrial or big buildings. That's sort of what John was saying anyway.
Well, any industrial park, you're going to have to put in a road. I mean, Bitterford, they put in the roads that gas, the sewer, the water.
Let them put the roads in, like, right now with the economy, I don't think they're going to afford it. Let them put the roads in, if somebody wants to buy behind a den's, he'd probably sell them a roadway right in through his place and build a building out back, and they'd have their road. And then they'd put a wheat field in, then maybe later on, a whole bunch of the business owners get together and say, hey, let's do this service, let's foot the bill for service on Route 1 from where it starts to where they are. I just think, I think it's a live and let live thing. I don't think we can plan on it and try to make, force people into, or hope, anticipate they're going to come in, it's too much of a gamble.
I think to Bentley's point, maybe we ought to put, you know, we're working with the comprehensive plan right now, maybe language ought to be put in there to encourage that type of development, to look for stuff like that, and then...
Like what?
For, for access in the back.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
And, but I don't know how you can put regulations, I mean, today, there's nothing that stops anybody from doing it if they wanted to. And even going down the road, nothing stops anybody, if anyone's got enough money, they could buy all that property and put in a business park if they wanted to, or something like that.
But if you want to do that, you got to plan for it now. You can't let it happen organically, because it usually doesn't.
Yeah, but...
Usually doesn't, Dan.
I guess I'm confused with, you say you were planning for it, but there's a ton of landowners out there.
Yeah.
And those landowners may not want anybody to do that, so, you know, I'm confused on how you go and plan for it without making sure that the landlords are okay with that.
Well, you got to decide what you want to do. I mean, you guys on the council basically told us, hey, let's start, let's start getting aggressive about our economic development plan. Let's start, let's start putting in a little more commercial, increase commercial valuation. And you're looking for a more aggressive approach to it. And if you're going to do that, you're going to have to zone land for specifically for commercial purposes.
Hence the DV2.
And attracting.
Right. Hence the revamping and making a DV1 and a DV2, right? That's part of that.
Right.
So when you go through that, there's nothing that stops them from doing it, from accessing that back. But I'm not sure how we can make regulations that says, you know, we're going to put a park back there, or have, you know, movements back there.
No, what we're trying to do is keep it loosey-goosey enough that we would, we would try to plan to have a road back there if we, if we want to do that. We want to increase some of the developability back there, we're going to have to either do a road or else we're going to have to do the D, which we have some connections between. We have to plan for it. If you just say, we're going to not look for connectivity between sites, each one of these property owners, unless they assemble all of these parcels out here, each one of these guys is going to go directly out to the front. And so you will have these large, independent, unconnected sections back there. Now, I'm not saying that's necessarily bad, but what I'm saying is that probably will reduce the developability in some of those parcels. Because, let's face it, it's access, it's access for the utilities, it's also access for handles. And if everybody's got to build 600 feet to get in the back of a road, every single one of these parcels got to go 600, 1,000 feet in, you're already at $200,000 in the hole before you even get to your inner development. So it's not feasible from that standpoint. Go ahead.
Chair, I just, my two cents were, the idea of, I heard two comments that are interesting. One is the idea of a business park, which this is a business park, it'd be a planned, permitted, completely drawn-out park where you actually have the shared investors of shared properties have given rights for their land, or sold their land to an LLC or development corp entity. So then you've got marketable lots. And that's, that's really a great approach for anyone, any town want to do. But it puts the town or a development corp in the business of having to take risks because it's just a hell, the money came from somewhere. And I think that's always something worth considering. But it seems to me that, I think, what Dan was saying, the idea of encouraging connectivity is absolutely important. No question about it. Get people up the road and have connector roads. Which you got to think, too, you're looking for businesses that have to have signage, and they're going to want to have signage. If there's any kind of a, if they're industrial or it's a light, commercial, and if they need access from the highway, they're going to want to have signage. But you've got your signage regs already in here and lighting along the highway, and someone isn't going to want to drive multiple... and someone isn't gonna wanna drive multiple, through multiple properties to get to their property, unless they're this kind of use, it doesn't need that, sort of like a machine shop or, some, some people don't need that. But I think the idea to encourage connectivity, supposed to mandating a road be built, to standards when you can't, when someone comes in and builds a road and requiring you, all of a sudden, design your property, when you need, you want your road to be a hundred feet over here, and the road's already been built and you have to connect it, well, it doesn't fit your, your design, you can't put your building in now on your property because the road is somebody built for you, unless the town goes ahead and actually master plans and designs the roadway system, and then comes up with a fund or whatever to attempt to do it. And it, I'm just, it'd be a million and a half at least to do that. So, the idea of maybe encouraging connectivity through private driveways and through private thoroughfares or accessways, not calling them roadways, and then giving developers incentives based on density or based on other uses and that sort of thing, to encourage the connectivity would be a better way to do it. That way, it gives the developers encouragement, like you say, to partner up and look for key ways to access and work around wetlands, and they get something back for doing it, for providing that extra hundred feet that they otherwise wouldn't have built, and have some minimum standards of what that roadway needs to be. But it's not a right-of-way, it's an interconnectivity with maybe an access easement, so people can use it, but not a road right-of-way so you get into the double furniture issue.
That's what's happening though, is, is we're, we're doing it, we're encouraging, I think what we want is, is we're encouraging some type of road, interconnectivity there with like a master plan. If we just say, we encourage you to, to, to connect, you could have one connecting here, another one there, and someone else puts a, a development in between. And then it, it doesn't work, then how do you get around that? So, if we can have more of just a, a grand scheme, not a requirement, and we're not telling them that's where it must be, but, but to have some foresight. If we don't have foresight, I don't know if it can all work without seeing a range of locations. And, um, 'cause something's not working right now, as far as live, live Bentley is, it's not working with that approach now. So, we're trying to be pro-business, to, to encourage, to be aggressive, get some ideas to, this might not be the right idea, but it's, it's, it's what we've come up with. If there's better ideas, then we're open to it. But we have to do something back there, otherwise, they're all landlocked. And there'll be, it hasn't been any development yet, really. It's, that, that whole stretch of Route One, it, it, I don't know if there's, how many new businesses have gone in the last, except for Bentley's, since Marty built that, how many others, Pizza, it's about it. It's, if something's not happening along that stretch.
I'll tell you, a master plan's the way to go, but that's gonna require investment in looking at the wetlands, looking at divertment pools, looking at potential setbacks and spending, doing some homework. Like, say, come up with a master plan that is, that's, that can be, it's malleable, it can be shaped, but at least you've got something in the zoning that suggests.
It, it wouldn't be definite, but it's, it's a suggestion, it's encouraged.
It has some movement behind it.
Chad, if you took, if you took your concept of coming in somewhere down by Limerick Road through Adrian Grant's property, and then what you kinda showed with the arc, maybe coming back in south of Arundel Ford, and behind the DV one, there's actually only seven parcels that, you know, going through that, getting the road in the DV two zone, you're really only dealing with seven property owners to kinda get together as a committee and see what they were thinking. It's not like you're dealing with fifty, hundred, you know? So, seven seems like you could get a pretty good straw poll on what they're thinking. And, and then it might become more, more reasonable to sort of start to conceptualize a plan, and, and then go forward.
That's a good point.
I have a couple of them. I, I have, first off, I have issues with our telling anybody you have to put in a road. I think we need to encourage the connect, the connections. And, and as a planning board, I think we could do that, you know, through, through placement of the parking lots, or placements of, of the connections, loosen up the standards a little bit, for people that are willing to do the connections, work with them to get it all together. I am adamantly opposed to the idea of a road. If, but if we're gonna put one in, it needs to follow the property lines between DV one and DV two? Just my opinion. Make that where the road is gonna be. But I think if we're gonna do it, we have to do it on both sides. If we're gonna encourage connectivity and development of a road, it has to be on both sides of Route One, between the DV ones and the DV two, on both sides of the road. We can't favor one set of businesses over another, or one set of landowners on the, on the eastern side of Route One, as opposed to the western side of Route One. I don't think that's right.
Yes, you can.
No, I just, I, I'm saying I don't think that's right.
Because availability of land, for one.
But we're talking, we're talking about developing both sides, DV one, DV two, and get connection between those businesses. I just don't think it's, it's appropriate to say, if you're on this side of the road, we're gonna encourage you to get connected together and look at a road, and if you're on this side of Route One, we're not gonna, we're gonna leave you out there.
Okay. Point of interest, if you look down at Kennybunk, okay? Interconnecting road is on one side, okay?
Marty, that doesn't, I, I understand what you're saying.
Let me finish, let me finish. It's on one side because the land was there. And, and the opportunity didn't have the, the wetlands and everything else in comparison to, okay? If you look on this side over here, you have, you have the depth, okay?
I, Marty, I understand that, it doesn't make it right. And I don't care what Kennybunk does.
Well...
It, it, just because Kennybunk did it, doesn't mean that we have to. And I don't think it's right to say to, to a landowner, we're gonna give you special treatment based on where your property is located.
Well, Ken's on different side in this.
Wait a minute, let me ask you a question, Rich. Is all land created equal?
No.
All land is created equal, all land is not equally...
No, it's not. No, it's not created equal.
What, could you TIF some of that area as an incentive?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, absolutely. I mean, we, we're reinstating with our, with our land, to make sure that we have seven, 33 acres we have available.
What is the depth? What, what is the depth besides following property line? Well, what is the depth?
Thousand feet, two thousand.
You have a thousand feet now, okay? But what is the depth that you're going deeper into this DV two?
Yeah.
What is the depth that it's gonna be?
It's gonna range in, in, in depth.
Are you gonna go fifteen, say fifteen?
Thousand to two thousand feet.
So, that's, so you're having, by your depth?
But, I mean, it's, it's also, I mean, what, I understand what you're saying. But at the same time, you know, I, I also, it, it's not gonna, it's not gonna be, um, it's gonna be a general area, it's not gonna be a specific area. We're not gonna say, oh, it's gonna always be 1,000 feet or 500 feet. It's gonna have to, it's gonna have to be responsive to topography, it's gonna have to be responsive to built pattern, it's gonna have to be responsible to maintain as much developability of the land as possible.
Okay, wait, let me ask Bentley a question.
It ain't gonna be like...
Bentley, how much depth is there from Route One to Old Post Road where your property is?
About half a mile, just about half a mile. Two thousand feet, twenty, twenty, twenty feet.
A half a mile is more than that.
He said half a mile.
Two thousand. Oh, I'm sorry.
Just about half a mile.
Over half a mile, I think, scouting, yeah. A thousand feet, close to mine, it's your house, from the road to Route One to Post Road.
Just about there.
Looks like it's about 3,000 feet.
Yeah, that's what I got, right about here. And then, then it's further south. I mean, John, John, sort of the reason...
I would think they're going to be, would be better serving if it was closer to Route One, because we also wanna have the, the, the D one district be able to tap in or tie into that, that road as well. So, if it was a thousand feet back, people would still be going out of Route One and coming back in to the next site. So, just like, just like Rite Aid in, to, to St. Louis Village, or in Sarko, going from, from Starbucks to Pizza Hut. You know, it's, it's right in the back of their parking lots, and it makes it sort of traffic control.
Yeah, I, I like what Rick had said, and I would agree with him 100%. I, but I would also say we have to have some sort of requirement to do it. We can't just encourage, because you know what happens with encourage? It gets run over, the process, it has, there has to be some sort of encourage, there has to be some sort of way of requiring them to look at it.
Right, and I think that goes along with, in my case, and then you have to at least do enough work to have done, again, study your resource mapping and all that, and soils, and, but it's enough to have at least a, a master plan that's been laid out conceptually, like you said, so that it can move. But there's a conceptual idea of what you were thinking about, where you were gonna split the parcels. It may tweak, and it may get moved, but there's, you go into the zoning, and that can become part of the zoning master plan, where that road may shift. But the general idea is there, and then you set your design guidelines based, and your parameters based on that, conceptually.
And, and we heard that word again, incentives. I think, I think in any of these, I know we don't like incentives, but I think incentives in something like this, there's gotta be. You gotta, you gotta give a reason. Instead of requiring everybody to meet the highest standard, you gotta give people a reason to, to spend more money doing something that may not necessarily be in their immediate best interest. Building roads, building connectivity costs money. And so, you gotta give them something to offset that, to, to get, to encourage them to do it. And we all have it in our taxes.
Do you call that special exception?
No, I call that incentives. I call it bonus. I would call it incentive, or I call it bonus. I don't care if it's density, I don't care if it's reduced parking, I mean, it would most likely be density.
The way, the way I see it is...
Especially, and you can do that if we have sewer. If we have sewer, we can play with density. If you don't have sewer, that's, it's tougher.
No, other question? If we could map out a corridor,
Okay.
and then have different levels of incentives. So, level one of incentive would be for a business, if you keep that corridor open, don't build on it, maybe, you know, something like you don't pay taxes on that.
Yeah.
You, you get an incentive, but a minimal incentive. If you put in a road, a connectivity, you get more incentive. If you put in a high-standard road, you're getting more incentive. So, the, the primary goal would be to keep the corridor open so that the town can build a road, if, if that ever happens, if, if we ever have enough land to do it. But in the meantime, provide incentives, further incentive, higher level of incentives for the businesses to provide that interconnectivity before the final road goes in.
And that could be also built out in a TIF district, right?
Well, I mean, you, you, the TIF, yeah, you could. And the TIF, remember, two things happen with a TIF district. First of all, now you're doing speculative TIF, you don't have bird in the hand. But let's say you get one, then you can, you can start using CEAs or credit enhancement agreements from that TIF, from whatever captured value you're generating from somebody you got there, to make a deal for, in, in, you know, basically extending the road. Incentives could be, we could use the CEA money to do that road. We could do a road, or the development corp could do a road. Or else you credit them, you credit whoever's extending the road into their project, you give them a CEA credit, so. It's getting the first one.
But the primary thing is to keep the corridor open.
Exactly, and that's, and that's a problem. And, and we, we, we have to bite the bullet, you know? There's a huge bullet, as these gentlemen are talking about, in terms of costs. But we do have to come up with a conception.
So, John, you wanna keep it open so that you don't fragment it, right? I mean, so that you don't...
Right, so that you, if you ever want to put a road in there, and if you ever can put a road in there, you've got the corridor to do it.
Reserved easement or...
Right, but you've gotta give the owners of that land a reason to keep it open.
And a question for you. Like we turn our head across the street, okay? Hopkins, the 45 acres.
Yeah.
The old famous village center.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there any grants out there? Because the town sucked up grants to have that all surveyed, wetland, this, that, and everything else done. Are there any grants out there to turn out to have that on equally side of the road? Okay, to have it done back there?
You mean to have a corridor mapped?
Well, when we turn our head, no, it was, it was totally village center around, that whole 45 acres was tromped around, and...
But, but Marty, you're asking, are there any grants, grants to do?
Have a grant.
Right.
To turn it around and help set up that plan. That's what I, it's, 'cause we did the same idea.
Huh? There were grants in, in the village center?
Town didn't suck it up, it was a grant, and it was started.
Yeah, that was, the community grant was the development, the village center, yeah.
That's the only thing I could think of.
Yeah, the grant was for the development.
How do we not pay that back? How do we not pay that back?
Yeah, we got $35 for that.
Oh, $35,000?
Yeah, just, but that was to, to...
Community Development Block?
Yeah, Community Development Block, yeah.
It had to be combined.
Waste of taxpayers.
Yeah, well, it had to be combined, something, it's, it's a planning thing. Usually, unless they have a $35,000 there, usually...
I don't know, I mean, you've got all the paperwork out of that upstairs somewhere.
Really? Show it to me.
No, I'm just saying.
Plenty of paperwork up there.
You want it, you want it committed, don't you, Tom?
Yeah, yeah, there was, it might have been some town money, but it was mostly grant. I don't think it was a road for...
Yeah.
Speculative, though?
Yeah, it was like a downtown...
The village center from nothing.
Downtown planning.
Yeah, that, that...
That's what it was.
Yeah.
I see.
I don't think that's available anymore.
It shouldn't be.
We won't get one. We won't get twice.
Everyone's got their obligations to do in four weeks.
There you go.
Preliminary.
The preliminaries are in four weeks?
Yeah.
Start, they were ready.
Okay, sure, can I have the match money? It's only 20%.
And have to go to the town?
I'll be there. We can get a special incentive?
We can authorize that.
You can get a special incentive.
I mean, it's, I, I think it is worthwhile to, you know, to map a preliminary corridor, and then decide whether we have the money to, you know, do some further studies to make sure that's a good corridor. And then if we can, you know, start incentivizing that as development happens.
In, in terms of the incentives, I don't see where we would wanna have three different levels. The first guy goes in there and he hops out for the first level of incentive, so he just keeps it open. Well, he hasn't done anything, he's just kept it open. What's the second guy in there gonna do? He's got no, no way to get to his property. You just, you left a little corridor open, I'm gonna have to develop a road to get to my own property. There's no incentive for anybody to go in. I think if we're going to offer incentives, we offer incentives for, for a complete connected strip, I'm not, I'm not a fan of, of offering, you know, make this connected strip. If we're gonna lay it out on a plan, then we need to own it and be responsible for it, and we need to build it.
Maybe eventually, we should. But if, if we just required someone to put in a road, so they're all by themselves, they can put in a, a 200-foot road to nowhere, where it just goes nowhere on both ends.
I know, it's a problem.
That would be a tough, tough cost to put up front for, for what?
But that's why I'm saying that, that the town needs to...
Open road to nowhere?
Yeah, Congress would support that, they'd put bridges to nowhere.
No problem. But I think to, to leave the land available, and then as we get that, that critical mass of five, six properties in a row, then, I think the town needs to step in at a certain point in...
Right, if, if we have five or six properties and they've all left space available for a road, who's gonna build the road? Town's still gonna end up having to build that road.
But at that point, it's, it's...
Debt money.
Exactly.
Debt money and also incentives. I mean, you gotta use...
Well, I think the incentives should be on existing landowners right now, so they leave that space open as a corridor.
Well, also, you know, some of them are gonna find that, you know, if they can connect to the next guy, it's to their advantage to do that, and they're gonna do it on their own accord.
Once again, it's...
But it's, you know, it's, it's gonna be, it's not going, it's not gonna be a formula, it's not gonna work the same way every single time, with every single landowner and every single circumstance. But to have the corridor, if you're willing to do the corridor, let's, let's, let's start, you know, bite the bullet and do the corridor, and play with it, and talk to the landlords.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think certainly wouldn't be prudent at this point to conceptualize something and then call a workshop with the landowners, and, you know...
You probably irritate a few people.
Yeah, if you don't let them know, and they find out through this, that, you know, we're looking at going through their land, even though it's not, you know, even though it's just a concept, when you start talking about other people's land, some people get very, very defensive about that. So, I think, you know, we need to be, as a town, we need to be upfront, right off the bat, and say, this is what we're thinking, you know?
Well, it's not just upfront, it's, it's, we'll make them partners, they own the land. This is to their advantage. Let them know that there's opportunities here. You wanna partner up with us on this?
But I would say that if, if we don't put something out and develop it... But I would say that if, if we don't put something out and develop it, if, if you're gonna have a business over here that, that keeps an open space and doesn't have anything, and then you're gonna have one or two lots in between and somebody over here, they're gonna connect to Route One. And it's, it, that's exactly what we don't want them to do. We wanna have a common access going into Route One. If we don't put it in to start with, then every single business back there is gonna have its own entrance out to Route One. 'Cause it's not gonna come together organically where they all decide to join together. Even if we encourage them to, we're gonna have to put that road in there and say, this is the connection out to Route One. If, having that road in there would be a great thing because it would improve the value of the land and make businesses more apt to wanna go back in there. We're gonna have to bite the bullet to do that, though. 'Cause I don't, I don't see that happening if we don't step up to the plate and say, this is what's gonna happen. And if we do that, we have to go buy the land from the, the current owners. We have to come up with all of the money. And, you know, if we're gonna do that, we might as well throw sewer into the mix, 'cause it's gonna be expensive anyway.
And what, don't forget your water.
Well, the water's already there.
Not, not a thousand feet in it ain't. You gotta bring the water back behind us, unless you want your fire department to run guard hoses from Route One.
It's better than we have to go back a thousand feet, at least we can have the next tub. Throw all the way in and, and then, and bring it back another thousand.
For all intents and purposes, water's there, you just gotta connect.
Right, it just needs connections.
Whereas sewer is way over there.
But that's, that's something that this election will have to look at.
The other thing is, right now, presently along Route One, okay, without an existing business being bought out for access, you really only have one spot. And that's where the town is. Because otherwise, everything along the way, on that side of the road, all the properties, you know, yeah, basically all the properties, except behind Branch Brook, which is Mrs. Garnett's over there, okay, is, uh, all, all, all bought up.
Yeah, but nothing says you can't go out and, and, and buy or get, you know, buy a small piece of it for a right-of-way or for an access road to the back.
Yeah, we gotta...
Well, the way the existing properties are now, you wouldn't have enough room to put a fifty-foot road in.
I can think of a bunch of places along Route One where you could put a road in that they're not all that close together.
Okay, clue me.
Should take a right down Route One.
Yeah, but, but turn around, go, I said, after Branch Brook, Garnett's is the only other one there. If you go to the next place up, which is where Toby's used to be, then you have campground, Hemlock Campground, which is all part of Jarvis's. Then from there, you have the pizza place. The next place there, you have Bobby Taylor's, okay? And turn around, that's all one there, and the road isn't widened up for an existing business or anything else. Next one you have is the pizza place, which isn't deep enough, okay?
We're getting to tour Route One here.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, that's why, the next place there is...
But they could still, but they could still...
The land could be bought.
Right, they, they could buy out the...
Huh?
A whole bunch of different access.
Assuming he wanted to sell. But you could.
Everybody has a price.
Of course.
The key thing is the town has one of the pivotal lines.
That's a good thing, at least it's...
Yeah.
At least we have that. So there is at least one potential tie-in.
I know, I know, Branch Brook one, because you must go out back. You know, you know what their road's like, so.
But that's also with Mrs. Garnett.
Yeah. But the, the point is that what, what we need to do is, we need to do, if the board wants to proceed with this, then we will start playing, and we'll start doing some playing. Do some concepts here and, and sit down with the neighbors. You're gonna have to sit down with the property owners and start discussing areas of potential here. What are you willing to do?
Well, for one to do, I think we're gonna get the, the landowners to come to me.
Absolutely. Yeah. As it should be from the beginning, that's the way we wanna go anyways.
And if we saw it, it's gonna be an advantage to them if they are landlocked now, they're gonna be probably very influenced by what we're looking at.
Well, there's only a couple of landlots. What they are is they are, they are basically accessed off of Old Post Road.
That's what I'm saying.
And, and the expense of building a road from Old Post Road back into there into this district for... Let's say, what, you wanna put a subdivision in here and then go all the way back to here? You know, build a road?
But you don't have access, you wouldn't be able to have that because that's going through residential, Old Post Road.
That's right.
Commercially.
And access, you can't, I mean, that's, you cannot access through the rest, through Old Post Road.
That's why I was saying what I was saying there, you know?
Yeah, so for some of these landowners, because there really not much they can do today except residential subdivisions.
Right.
It's a viable option for them to, you know, sell some...
Keep them, keep the residential up front on Old Post and sell the back property, which would turn out to make it landlocked unless they have a right-of-way or easement coming off Old Post. But if you turn out to have a potential that way, it's not a landlocked property.
And every one of these properties, except for this one and this one, and that one, that's the only one. They all have, they all have one, one house on it, so. But the complaining committee was talking about with that exemption. They already had their exemption, so they have no, no better chance than right now. I mean, you remember how they were concerned, oh, I have a piece of land, I wanna build a house on, well, most of them are built on.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we ask the planner to map a potential corridor on the south side of Route One. And when that's completed, we invite landowners, affected landowners, to discuss the possibilities.
Uh, wants to have a second on that?
Yeah.
We've discussed it quite a bit, any further discussion? We have a board on it. All in favor?
Yeah.
Any others?
Yeah.
Good job, Ken.
It's my job, you guys did the work.
Huh?
You did the work.
Okay, now we'll invest the time into it.
Deal.
Architectural design standards, okay, brace strap in. Thank you, gentlemen. Oh, you're going back there, okay. I thought you were pointing. One place. Um, you basically, last meeting, you said, okay, the DB two. We don't want architectural design standards for that, that's only for the DB one. But then the board gave some consideration, said, well, you know, we don't wanna have an abrupt edge between the DB one and the DB two, we wanna make some sort of, uh, transition. And so we came up with just, you know, a couple of ideas on that, and it all worked on visibility. It really worked on, it worked on two planes, visibility and proximity. I think the board was looking forward to, or looking at that if one could see the project from Route One readily, that there should be some sort of architectural design standard, very loosely done. And, or if it was close to DB, the DB one, DB two border, where you have a DB one project, you don't have a, a DB, you know, DB two project that's completely contrary towards the, you know, DB one. It should make that transition. And, you know, I'll tell you, that's not exactly the easiest thing to write. So it's very, it's, it's a, it's very loosey-goosey in some ways. Following the same pattern as the other one, so we weren't creating, we were keeping the same, same number of systems. Basically, said same thing, you know, in, any, as it said in the beginning, any, any proposed building renovations need the design review, or any new building needs that certificate as part of the site plan or additional use rule. And then the, and the first one was trying to deal with the proximity, in which we were basically saying the proposed construction located within two hundred feet of the DB two district shall be designed to establish visual compatibility to the building fabric of the DB one in terms of mass and scale. Don't think we'd get more nivellous than that. Maybe we can, but that's pretty nivellous. Basically saying there's gotta be some mass and scale relationship between the two. Now, if it's a very small building, then we've got a problem. That means you gotta somehow make it, make a transition. But that's, that's where we started talking, and we were limiting only two hundred feet, which is not very big, that's not very far.
And that's added to the DB one, DB two district line?
That's the DB one, DB two district line.
I need, I need some help with this, 'cause I can understand that section. But if I go down to three B, all new building construction within, within one hundred feet is encouraged to be multi-story. Why the discrepancy between the one hundred and two hundred feet, compatibility as opposed to height?
Well, because we were talking about also, we were trying to ensure that, it was another layer to try and ensure that you would, you would put in more than one story next to the DB two district.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
Which we encourage, it says encourage, it doesn't say ask, it says encourage. You gotta have some flexibility here, you know? Some cases, it may not be possible. But you encourage, you know, you can do that by, by a number of different ways. But then the next one's the architectural design standards for that area that you can see from the state or town highway. That's something that you guys may, may be the last time to see. Use that as your, as your starting point. You can see it from the road, you know, just come up with standards if you can see it from the road, or if it's close to the, close to the DB one, DB two boundary. Now, what it means is that we've got only those two areas, you know, if you can see it, or if it's close to the boundary, and then anything else is no standard.
Are these standards similar to, to DB one?
They're not as, no, they're not as, they're similar, but they're not as defined, okay? You know, we have, the only thing that, that we really moved on, in fact, you did, Tom, you talked about the concern of having a huge, long, white wall. What do we do about that? So you said you want fenestration on that. Well, you can keep the same fenestration on there, saying that you gotta have some twenty-five percent voids, or twenty-five, twenty-five and sixty-six percent voids. Or else, we also put in, if you look at number five in there, in lieu of that, you can either do land, heavy landscaping, so you can't see that wall, or you get painted, sort of like you did at Christmas tree shop. Drop the aisle.
Yeah, that's what they did down at, what was that place, that where the bike shop is now? Where on the bike, but they did it with, with the, the shingles on the side of the building.
Yeah.
Really neat-looking stuff.
There's a variety of different ways of, of breaking up the mass.
I had no idea what you called it until you told me about it here.
Okay, I know.
I can't pronounce it, but I know what it's called.
In French, it means trick of the eye. But it's the same sort of thing, mass and scale, it says, it doesn't say what it has to be, it says, it only shall be designed so not to overpower the mass and scale of existing structures or future builds as located in the DB one district.
Can't have graffiti on it?
No, mass and scale, skip, you know?
I have, I have a problem...
When you're talking paint, you're...
Tagging, tagging is in trouble. I have a problem with the future buildings.
Well, yeah, that, that was a problem for me too.
The crystal ball.
At mass, mass and scale.
Well, existing structures, I mean, you're the, you're the one that said, well, we can't think of just, just the structures, we gotta think of the future structures. You gotta think of what is supposed to be there. Not what is there necessarily, but what is supposed to be there, what will be there in the future.
Yeah, but we don't have that crystal ball.
Well, we do with the design standards.
Okay.
We do with the design standards. Yeah, we know that, you know, you go four stories, now that you can, you can have...
My, my concern being that buildings shall be designed so as not to overpower, overpower the mass and scale of existing structures, which you can very easily do. But if that, Lord forbid, the building burns to the ground and the owner doesn't wanna rebuild, so he sells a piece of property and somebody puts himself to the size of Rumba House Pizza over there, that guy in the back is gonna overpower it no matter what he does.
And Bobby is it?
And that would, that would be, that's the only concern I have about future buildings. Yeah, it's, you know, it's a worst-case scenario, but...
Well, it's, no, what you need to do is you have to make a judgment, though. The planning board's gonna have to make a judgment, colleagues. This is, without coming up with specific standards like roof pitches and all that stuff, you gotta make a judgment, like, hey, it's gotta be, you gotta make a transition, visual transition. And, you know, that's not necessarily hard to do, it's actually pretty easy. Or they can make a, a good case to the planning board, but the, the planning board has to be a judge of this, and you have to lose common sense and, and judgment.
Will, will, will there be variations?
I guarantee it. But I don't think this board wants to start specifying exact standards. I got that feeling from the last one.
Right, but I do agree with Rich, you cannot conform to something that doesn't exist. You know, you can't say that you can't overpower something that isn't there.
I wonder if, if the wrong term being used. I think it's, it's for the type of building that would be allowed according to DB one standards.
Right, that has to be worded properly, because this, this wording, I don't think that sets...
Scale, uh...
But what's the, what's the building max that's proposed in the DB one?
What do you think?
No, no, square foot.
Oh, square foot?
Twenty thousand.
Uh, three thousand.
No, 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 no.
Twenty.
Twenty thousand, twenty thousand square.
Yeah, we've got a hundred thousand proposed in this, that's, I mean, you go to the two maxes and you're you've got quite a bit of a difference in scale between, that's allowed between the two districts.
Yeah, it's a huge scale. Now, you can do things to make it so that that is not obvious. We're not, the hundred thousand square foot building, the hundred twenty thousand square foot building does not, you know, suddenly become a giant monster. You can do a number of things, you can do it by the orientation, you can do it by intervening in landscape. Remember, it's what is visible.
Visible, first how to go.
What is visible. So make it not visible, or break it up, you know?
One, one thing, one thing I have a question of. Visible and invisible or whatever outside. Your depth of DB one is how many feet?
It varies. Generally, it's three fifty.
Three fifty?
Generally, it's three fifty.
Now...
But it follows property lines where it can.
Okay, you're, you're doing your depth of three fifty, okay? Then, when you have existing along Route One down, you won't see anything, because at three fifty, you have basically all the trees on your existing property up front.
Perfect, if you don't cut them down, yeah, exactly, right, yeah. But at the same time, buildings, people who are gonna be building the back also want, want some visibility as well, I would imagine. I would if I were a business owner. I wouldn't wanna be seen, I'm not gonna wanna hide.
Well, if you look at Hanford, you know, they all power survey the roaring, or shelling of properties down there. But they're further back, and it's gonna be visibility.
They don't, you think they overpower?
No.
I think in the scale, I don't think they do at all, I think they, I think they broke it up nicely.
Yeah, 'cause you get that, the distance between the buildings up front and looking at the back. Most of the greenery they planted.
And, you know, you also have that little advantage of all perspective. Because they are, because they are farther back, you've got a vanishing line, you've got a vanishing point, you've got a perspective. So that building was smaller than it actually is. So if you really actually sit there and look at it, the roof lines are even. Even in Hanford, it's got a taller curve.
And it, well, you know, if we get the DB one to, to build... And it, well, you know, if we get the DB1 to, to build the way we would like, which is within 50 feet of Route 1, they're 350 feet back, and they have to be 100 feet from the line, so you're talking another 400 feet before you see the next building, so.
No, they'll actually be 100 feet from the line, they have to meet certain scales with the line.
Right. But with, it, it, at that 100-foot line, that scale would work out quite well, because that's, that's quite a distance to go back.
And remember, you got four, you got four-story buildings or two-story buildings. You might have ones, but encouragement, and we're trying to create incentives to go two-story.
So I think 3A, the mass and scale, could be reworked to, to, you know, visually,
Yeah.
you know, not overpower, as opposed to somebody looking at this very black and white, you know.
You got a comment, Doug?
Yeah, the only comment that I, I wanna make is, you know, we don't have design standards, which, which is a good thing. But we wanna be careful when we wanna leave it up to the board, because, you know, I mean, I was on this board, and we hash things and hash things and hash things and hash things. For somebody to come in here and say they want a building, and now, you know, this member of the board doesn't like it, that member of the board, and now you get into a vicious circle, and these guys out here are like, screw you guys, I wanna go somewhere else. So somehow, you gotta make sure that that doesn't happen.
Yeah, we do.
Why not just make this the design standard for the entire district?
That was one of my thoughts, is why differentiate? I mean, this is, this is our, you know, go-to business district in the town.
Yeah, I mean, because the only thing that's going in circles.
So, Rich, are you saying that have to apply these standards to the whole district?
To the whole district.
But what, but if someone is back 700 feet, can't, no one will ever see him, like a, a rental machine.
Unless you have a road out there.
Right, we're gonna have a road there, somebody's gonna see it, right.
But on the other side, you aren't gonna see it from Route 1.
But it's the impact, these are, so, so it won't impact those businesses that, that spent the extra money to have, have that extra design standard, certain, certain look, if they have this right behind them, that takes it away from them. So, don't build a restaurant up front, and then there's a, a metal warehouse that's 100 feet behind them. Okay, what impact?
With, what, what rest, what zone is the restaurant in?
In DB1.
Then you're still gonna have mass and scale and building heights that are within the 100 feet.
Well, I'm saying go, go easier, what, what's the?
I'm saying, take this whole, this whole section of architectural designs and architectural compatibility and say, that's the standard for the DB2.
But what about just a, a warehouse? If, if, they want, we're telling them they have to spend the money to have windows all around, they?
No.
No, but you can break it up with landscaping, and do some other things to visually ease that.
Is, is that necessary, though, if far enough back, and if, and if there is a connector road, so you see the, the warehouse, it, no big deal, it's not gonna impact the, the businesses up, up front of Route 1. So I think there, there should be easier standards out back, I don't think you can do that too much.
Well, I think one of the reasons why we said we didn't wanna do that is we wanna encourage people to, to go on Route 1 first.
Yeah. So this zone's creating, like, is it transition zone?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I know that gets, that gets.
Gets messy.
Messy, yeah.
And the only other way to do it is to say within certain number of feet, that, that, well, they should be, make a visual transition from the DB1 to the DB2, and leave it at that, and the planning board's gonna have to, you know, make a decision.
Another way to go about that would be if a building is situated within so many 100 feet from a public or private right-of-way, then it has to meet a certain standard. And if it is back sufficiently far, then, then you, you give them some latitude.
I think that, that's kinda what this does, although it's not just from a right-of-way, it's, it's from a property.
Property line.
Whether the zone, however.
I don't know, it's, you know, I'm looking at it going, if we put a road back in that, then whether, whether we have any other standards or not, everything that is in here will apply to anything that you can see from that road. Even the back road that we put in, because it says, "All proposed structural renovations, modifications, or new construction proposed within the downtown business district to visible from any state or town highway shall conform to the following."
Yeah.
So you put a road back in, they're gonna have to conform to this, so we might as well make this for the whole area.
I, I would, I would change that, say, visible from Route 1. Or existing business or something, that.
What about Limerick?
Oh, that too.
How about River?
Yeah.
How about Old Post?
So that's why you include more than just water.
No, and we can name those roads, it's not a problem.
What about the other names, the road that we are gonna plan?
Well, that would exclude the connector road.
I think we should exclude that connector road.
That should be industrial way. That, that new road should be an industrial way, not have those restrictions like times.
Yeah, it's just industrial buildings back there, who cares? If you're driving back there, you, you, you're back there for another reason, you're not driving Route 1 looking for a good place to eat. You're back there to, to one of the other things, to drive it.
So the question is, well, first of all, we can name the roads so we don't get in that kind of problem. We can say Route 1, Limerick Road. River Road, takes care of that corner down there, so.
But you're probably gonna wanna put campground, because there's gonna be stuff visible from campground.
I don't think so.
I, I don't need campground, I mean, uh.
Lockhead.
Well, yeah.
I don't think it'd be anything from Lockhead, yeah?
Depends on how big it is.
How much is?
Depends on how many stories they put up, it might very well be visible.
Thirty feet.
Maximum, from the code.
Fifty feet, huh?
So Bradley's gonna have to bigger, uh, build, build a bigger barn.
Bigger fan.
Just enclose the whole area.
Well, that, that dome might have to, they might overlook to see what, what the campers are doing.
The dome.
You might have to turn it on, put a tent up, so they, they can't see them playing.
We got our own version of the dome.
So what do we wanna proceed? Do you wanna make it visible from those roads, do you wanna make it almost, we have a certain transition zone? Because the last time you said visible from Route 1, and, well, Route 1. But Limerick is, you can't exclude.
Could it be arterial roads? Because if we start naming, and.
We missed one.
We missed one, yeah, no one's put in there, we have to change it.
I don't even worry about it, honestly.
No?
No. I'm only caring, I'm only, I'm only, I mean, if you wanna say arterial, fine, I'm good with arterial, because that's, well, actually, the new road might be arterial, then, if it were connected through, that might be, that's it. It's based on trip generation. It's based on trips per day, that's how we define it. But really, it's successful, we can create the arterial.
Well, we, we can come up with language to, I don't know if that's quite the issue, which road, is any, I think we're also gonna, from, that general traffic traveling through town. I mean, it's gonna be, we're requiring businesses to build to serve the standard right up front. The investment that, that they're putting into it, we want them, want to protect their investment. So, and once you get beyond that, it, it, once you go back 600 feet, then it won't impact the visibility of DB1. So, if, if I was.
Are, what are you thinking we should have the standards for, for buildings that are that far back, should we have any?
I think then we just go to general land use type of requirement, just.
Then, then, then just take this one and say, okay, all of this applies to any, any business that is in, within 600 feet of the DB1.
But if they're not visible, as Marty says, I don't care.
If they're visible, then you go to that standard, if they're not visible.
But that's the way it's written out, if you can see it, then you'll stay.
Yeah.
You don't see it, then no, no standard applies.
But my concern with that is, what happens one day, they build it, and it's not visible, they decide they want visibility, they've got a, a building that's lacking in architectural character, and then it becomes visible.
Right.
So that's where I.
It could happen when you're buffering between, you know, between things.
Oh, yeah, and that's where I would say, let's go with a, a distance.
Yep, specify the distance, anything within this area.
Yeah, what's, what's the distance gonna be?
Would you say it was a couple hundred feet, 350 feet, is the typical depth of the?
On the DB1 district is 350 feet.
Another 250 feet?
Are you saying 600 feet?
So anything within 250 feet of the DB1.
Right.
As opposed to 600 feet of Route 1. I just, I just, I'd place it on the DB1. Because that's gonna be much easier to, to measure out.
What would be from the DB1 line?
From, from the DB1 line, anything within, what's it, what, 250 or 300?
I haven't thrown a number out.
Yeah, I, I would, because I was thinking anything within 500 feet of the DB1, that's to meet these standards, if you want. More than 500 feet, then you don't have to.
Okay, that motion?
Oh, no, that's, that's actually, that's a discussion.
Well, for 200, that, that, that's here.
No, you follow property lines.
Well.
You know, and, you know, if, if we wanted, the, yeah, the 200 would be fine.
Split, split piece.
I was just wondering where.
I was, no. With, from the DB1, I was just looking at it from the point of view, are we gonna have any standards on the other buildings? And, and, that are further back than the 200 feet.
So what you said about that, what kind of standards are, do you think we should have for ones further back?
I don't have a clue. I, I don't, you know, because I honestly, and I do look at it and think, well, you know, if there's a warehouse, do we really wanna tell some guy he's gotta put windows in a warehouse? Or he's gotta put this fancy little painting on the?
I mean, if I had a rental machine that's gonna go back, that's a very attractive building.
It makes no sense to tell them to do that.
Yeah, why would we want it, yeah?
But, so what's, what standards can we use for that? What do we have in, in, where our rental's machine is now, what are the standards that they have for buildings?
Not, no landscaping, though, there, there's no art.
No, no, there's no art.
There's no landscaping, there's no landscaping of, of buffering between properties.
Then that's what we do, do that back here, and pick, pick up an arbitrary number, 100 feet, 200 feet, 500 feet, 1,000 feet, and say, within this zone, it has to meet these standards, if it's not in this zone?
No standards.
Okay.
Yep.
And that would, I'd be fine with that. The question is, what number do we use?
As you said, it's arbitrary.
I'll say 500 feet.
What's the distance?
From the DB1 line. Okay, come up with a, a number.
How about 200?
200 is fine. You know, I think, you know, we need to establish a boundary and say, that this is where a line is, so if we say it's 200 feet, okay.
Well, that's what you got in, in paragraph two. Both structures located within 200 feet of the DB2 district shall be designed.
Okay.
So it's sort of that.
Sure, yeah, if, so we can use that, use the 200 feet and say that's, that's the standard. If you're beyond that standard, how do I stay? Do some landscape.
Yeah, I guess the, the plan's got a comment.
So, so would that, then, would that provision in number two trigger the design standards of number three?
Yes, if they're within that 200 feet, then the design standards would kick in.
Right.
Or at least that's the way I would.
That's not the way I read this, but that's the way I would, I would prefer to see it written.
How, how do you interpret it?
I would interpret that as you got, there, there, the way that it would be, it's, it's two different, two different sets of criteria. One, you have to abide by number two if you were within that, within that 200 feet, and then, whether you're within 200, 200 feet or not, you would have to adhere to number three based on its individual criteria.
They're so visible, that's basically strictly.
Yeah.
So you're saying take the visibility on there and just put the 200 feet?
I would take it and say that, the, just replace architectural designs with the architectural compatibility. Make it so that it is compatible for the DB1, and give it all of the design standards that go along with it.
So, so it'd be no three, it'd just be?
That's right, it would be two, and then if I just.
Two, and A, B, C, D, go.
Okay.
I thought the two was gonna die.
I feel.
We're in Enigma tonight, Pat.
I feel compelled to say this.
Chaos theory.
I feel compelled to say this once again, but we're trying to create a utopia while at the same time wanting to attract business. And, you know, we're just shooting ourselves in the foot, we're just layering on all these restrictions. And all I can think of is Brunswick Landing, it's like, it's, it's the most beautiful business space you could ever imagine, it's gorgeous. Any business would wanna go there, but they've put on so many layers of restrictions, they either have to archive it or not. So what are we doing? We, we don't have such great land, we don't have the perfect location for a business, and we're layering all this stuff on here. If we wanna attract business, we need to make it appealing for them to locate here, not to put on all of these levels of restriction.
Brunswick Landing, also have infrastructure? Hey. Okay.
Everything you want.
But I haven't been there, that's why I'm asking you. With all these restrictions with no infrastructure?
Well, I mean, that, that's.
Well, I think, you know, we're, we're going down a dead road unless we put some infrastructure in it.
And the only way we're gonna do that is generate some tax revenues, and the only way we're gonna do that is to get some businesses, so what comes first? Do you wanna exclude the businesses, or do you wanna encourage?
I, I honestly believe that what comes first is the infrastructure, because if we don't have the water in the sewer, I don't care. We don't have it now, and they're not coming.
And they have it.
That's right, and they have it, so in order to get them here, we have to have the water in the sewer and make it work well.
I mean, and John, I don't see any of these criteria as overly burdensome. I mean, it's not like you're, you're going through, you know, what, say Scarborough has for some of their architectural standards alone without one, which, I mean, really lays out what you're gonna do from a, a development standpoint, a, a architectural standpoint. I mean, to where, you know, you could, you could probably, and offensively, architects that are in the rooms probably sit down with a builder and come up and lay out and meet these criteria without having to get an architect involved, which is not the case in a lot of other communities.
True, but, but we already have constrained land there, so it's already gonna cost a business a substantial sum just to locate there, so why make the burden heavier? If we, if we're trying to encourage business, and this, I mean, I'm not gonna belabor the point, but if we're trying to encourage business, I think we need to decrease the level of restrictions that we have.
What you're doing too, another thing is with pushing the buildings further from the road, you're offsetting your favorable frontage requirement that you were trying to do to bring the buildings closer, put the parking in the rear to get that colonial look, so you're, you're basically pushing the, the houses further back, and then the, the parking further back, and, and the other thing is, the, the types of uses that are permitted in there are quite variable, from garden centers, to fuel storage areas, to kennels, to campgrounds, to churches, amusement parks. So the, the architectural standards are gonna, by their very nature, because it's such a broad-use district, you're gonna have problems with those individuals. you're gonna have problems with those individual businesses trying to meet those standards when they're not, they may not be appropriate.
You know, and, and we'd say, one of the best examples of how it came down is what Rick, what you had worked on with the VIP. Where it just, I'm sure it probably was an extra 5% to the cost of that building, but, but it's, it, it really, if that was just, just the way Tyre Warehouse would have built, just a metal building, it, it may not have been quite as attractive. VIP probably does more business than Tyre Warehouse does, just because...
In the DB, in the DB1, you know, absolutely some levels of, as you get into DB2, I can see with the board, in my opinion, with the board in wrestling, with sort of the concept of being overwhelmed by something. It seems to me that as long as you have some kind of language that gives you the greatest amount of flexibility, like John's saying, but has some protectionism, if you put a nice building in the front and your lot's only, you know, 250 feet to DB2 is, no matter what your lot is, unless you've got a big structure, you've got a football field from Route 1 to the earliest part of DB2, before you even get into DB2, and I assume it's a setback or something, just by the nature of the distances. If you've got a super large building in DB1 and you lived it to what, 17,000 or 20,000 square feet to begin with, you've got 350 feet to fill that, you're gonna have some open space there. And so just by distance alone, anything in DB2 is gonna be back a football field from Route 1. And then you could use screening and other measures to say, just some very generalized compatibility, good neighbor type of things, and you're probably gonna be protected for almost 99% of anything that goes in. Like I said, every moving park can go in. There's no restrictions, and you just take it, there's really nothing you can do to absolutely screen it. But you allow that to exist because it, you're trying to herd business. So as long as you've got something, to me, it's something that gives you some level of protection as the guy in the front, who's put this investment in, like you said. Without being so onerous, but just knowing that somebody can't come in and put a block wall, murked against the back of your property, and you have to look at it and be in the back of your building. But that could be done through some very general screening standards or something like that, without getting too onerous. Seems that would probably wrestle that to ground.
I still agree with you on the rest restrictions, the more of an tight business. We're 25 miles from Portland, a little bit further away from Route 1, from Route 95 than like 111, where all the Texas Roadhouse and all, oil god and all those things are. We don't have that great location. We don't have the population here, and we need, we need the money from these businesses and we need the Tyson to come out here and build. And what John's saying is basically what we need to do. And then I think, just like you look at some of the businesses that are on Route 1 right now, and look at the way that they made their front yards look so much better. They, they've done architectural work to make them better, because that entices the customers to come, and they want the customers. As they, as they build a crappy building, they get people to come into the crappy building, and they start making some money. Then they put a brick front on it, or some arch windows or something like that, or some shrubbery, or a nice lawn, or something. And they, they're doing these things, and that just is a way of being able to afford to do it. And if you try and put too many restrictions, we're not gonna get the people to build any type of industrial or restaurants or commercial, tax, advantage type buildings. That's what we need.
Question, you know, in regard to VIP, I was gonna ask that question to address that. The town had, the planning board had no standards. It had no, it had no limits. It had no, nothing. Unless we could hold up their application for architectural design. Legal, did you?
No.
Or was?
It might have been a gray area, 'cause I remember where, my, my judgment was persuaded by the fact of the much greater area. I don't know if that's a, a square feet, where what should be included is, is the, is the service area part of the retail. So, and part of the trade-off was, it's gonna look great, so who cares?
It's sort of natural selection. Honestly, that was a case of, like Beth was saying, sort of natural selection. I think they learned through a project in Gorham that required pretty strict, a lack of better, I think it was a historic district or close to it, that they had to come up with a better design standard, and I think they saw that, and they came here and said, let's keep the same design that's working for us. I mean, it was just, but it happened by propagation, just by natural, you know, they, they learned.
But there was discussions on that the board could not hold down to that design, and there was a good working relationship. I was on the board of the title, we had that discussion, 'cause I said, hey, we can't force them to do this.
We really lucked out.
But, you know, we had a developer that wanted to work with the board.
VIP came in and...
This was such a visible...
But the other thing, it was public, outside public comments, okay, that turned out, what's the planning board? It was the outside public that turned out was more vocal on it, okay? Because our hands were tied, which made them also come along that realm of, of doing it.
Okay, which is why, why, I, I, I like the idea of, of having a statement in there and saying, you've gotta have some compatibility with your front. But I think at the same time, I'm not sure an arbitrary distance is what's gonna do it as well as just say, you can see it. And I, and I appreciate what you're saying. They can come and change that later, but then there are violations in the contract. Right? Then some enforcement action. You know, I, I think that you...
The reason I was going with that was to make it easy to interpret. And easy to, for people to go and not have to worry about whether you stand up in front of a board and if you've got a mildly unpopular project that people are gonna argue, well, it's, it's gonna be visible in the wintertime. But it's not visible in the summertime. And all kinds of that stuff. And make it black and white. Take it out of the, take it out of the subjective mode and put it into a defined area.
Well, and, and there's merit to that. I, I, I do think that the visibility goes really, if you can't see it, it's not an issue. But you're right. You have the problem of defoliation and there are seasonal changes and dead plant material. Which happens. What's the boys' pleasure?
I, I think we should just merge two and three together, so that we have that set of standards at 200 or 250 feet. Well, it's at 200 feet, so 200 feet's fine. Just make all of those standards part of number two.
So you're gonna get rid of three?
Well, we're gonna take A, B, C, D, and it's all gonna be part of two.
Three, four, five, six. That's the motion.
Yes.
Do I have a second on that? Do you understand what we're doing?
No.
We're gonna get rid of all, the three lines on the architectural design standards. We're gonna remove that, remove architectural design standards. But A, B, C, D, E, D are gonna be part of number two. Architectural compatibility. We're getting rid of architectural design standards.
Right. So we're getting, we're getting rid of the section that says it's gonna be visible from any state of town highway. And we're imposing a, a distance of 200 feet. And if, and if it's within that 200 feet, it has to be A, B, C, D.
As well in paragraph two, I think, and the reason I asked a question earlier, if you have 200 feet of DB, I think it should be DB1 district. Because we're talking about buildings in the DB2 district.
Yes, you're right.
Is that number two?
Yes.
Correct, okay. Yep.
So do we have a second on the motion?
I'll second.
Can I ask, what is the, the front setback? I see the, in the previous page, it's 40-foot front setback. Yep, it's correct, yep.
Which one? 40 feet?
40 feet, okay. So...
That's arbitrary, because we really haven't got enough space on that yet.
All right, so...
And I don't have those product times here.
Since, sorry. Since most of the, most of the zone is on property lines, the setbacks would affect, we would be like 200 feet. Or I'm sure it'd be much less than 200 feet, but if they, if they wanna be as close as they can to the road, then they're gonna have to have some type of design. If they, if they don't wanna do it, they can, and have room, they can go back another 100 feet back and do whatever they want.
Right, but if they choose to sit up within 200 feet of that property lot, maybe these standards. They'll live at 201 feet.
You drive through most industrial parks, most of talent compared to them, the buildings are all setback. They need 100 feet back from the road and, and buffered, and so, so it may not be that 200 feet. I don't know, maybe that's not the right number, but...
I don't think, yeah, I don't think you're gonna want a lot of zerobing in that district.
You mean a lot of buildings in that 200 foot?
Yeah, 200 foot. I don't think you're gonna want it.
Yeah, we may not.
And some people may just avoid it altogether. Maybe put a park in there.
They're gonna look at it and go, I built it 201 feet.
And they'll put a park in there.
Yep.
If you turn around, I was, we're looking at this existing map that we have here, okay? And this is what we had on Route 1, okay? And if you use the 350 feet, okay, for one, okay, I don't see many property lines at 350 feet. You're splitting a property up?
No. The, the question about the 350 with the depth of the DB1, it's...
That's what I'm using, that's what I'm using...
We're using the property line as the border between DB1 and DB2.
Where possible, where it goes back like 500 feet, no, you do it at 350.
So you're gonna spread a property?
Yes. He has, he has what he has now, and it's not like he's losing it. He's, he's gonna have what he has now, because there's nothing in this district that you don't have right now. And then you're gonna have all this other uses that you can't have right now. So that property is actually increasing in value because the number of uses, types of uses, and the size of those uses that are permitted in that district has jumped dramatically from what it is now.
Well, what I say there is, if you have that the case, to get back further back, okay? If you have one property, all right, how are you gonna get your water out there, your utilities and everything else? Without giving out, without giving a, a easement or something else along the way.
If you're wanting to use those utilities, no matter where you are, you're gonna have to provide them on the site, or you're gonna have to extend services. In most cases, it's gonna be provided on the site. Unless we provide the services...
No, I'm just, I'm using it for example, if you have a resident or, or a piece of property along Route 1 right now, okay? Most of those properties, all right, have, if they're hooked by water, which were resident, originally was maybe homes or anything else, they only may have a 3/4 of an inch minimum sized water, okay? For them to come back, to turn around and put water behind that, another place, 3/4 of an inch is not enough.
They're gonna have to upgrade their services. They're gonna use that water, they have to upgrade their services. You're gonna have to do it anyway.
Put a new road, everything.
Industrial purpose or commercial purpose. It won't be, that's, that's an issue that has to be...
It's no different than buying a house lot and saying, hey, I gotta put in a well.
Yep. Okay, we got a motion on the floor in a second. How do we wanna proceed with this? All in favor? All opposed? John, you have a motion?
Me.
Marty and John are opposed. Okay, so I will make those changes. Okay. Okay, now, for the subpoints, A, B, C, and D, they're, they're now under number two, as the board just voted. I would love to consider A and B as staying there, but eliminate C and D. I, I don't think C and D roof lines of penetration are really necessary restrictions. Because again, your buildings are setback, it's a more industrial zone. I don't really care about flat roofs. I know there was some discussion last time. And penetration in terms of breaking up flat walls. We're in an industrial area, that helps the...
I really wish when you said, don't use that term industrial, please. Because I was only to count falling committee as, as a business stuff, okay?
Heavy business, so... So, think about that for a minute, but I will make the motion to that effect if the board wants to go along with that.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not sure that I wanna go along with that, because that would then disagree with, with the comment in, concerning architectural compatibility, that it needs to be designed to establish visual compatibility in, with the DB1 zone. If we're telling them that you can have a flat wall with nothing on it, and you, and you can have a flat roof, then it, it conflicts with the DB1...
No, you're talking, you're talking about restrictions within 200 feet.
Yes, and, and more than 200 feet, we don't care.
We don't care.
It's only within the 200 feet.
And with your 200 feet, where is parking?
We're just considering whether we wanna...
Yeah, you got the side front fires.
We haven't got the parking.
No, I'm saying, that's, that's independent of this architecture.
Yeah. So we have a motion on the floor, is there a second? There is, I didn't make a motion yet. Okay, okay. I mean, if, if there's not general support, we won't go through that. We're running out of time. I don't know, the fact that we're saying compatibility, I think we gotta keep that in there.
As well, Ted, I would, and to the board, in looking at E facade materials, I mean, I think, where we just located in visual proximity, whether that needs to be...
That part needs to be stricken?
Yeah.
Yeah, that has, that has to be stricken now. In fact, I think you're probably gonna end up stricken the whole time. Okay, well, since, since I'm not getting support for eliminating E lines of penetration, I would like to look at number five under penetration. I, I, not a French scholar, but I believe that is not spelled correctly. You've got too many L's and not enough D's. But at any rate, in lieu of penetration...
French dictionary.
I think, instead of saying painting, I would say application. Because that could be, you know, a, like a fake window. That could be the same thing that you could just kinda glue onto the wall or whatever. It doesn't necessarily have to be painted.
Yeah, I would agree with that, because you could, again, you can go back to the bike shop and look at, at the shingles on the side of that house.
Now, is anything to break it up, it could be any kind of an application. So I don't know if you wanna specify painting.
Well, you can put a, put a commas in there instead. Landscaping, painting, or truck building. Or other structural.
The application is what you want. You know, the application of a, a... I believe is all.
Yes, it just takes out the painting.
Why are we trying to get educated by using that terminology?
No, actually, it's just like, it's just a term.
Can't pronounce it, how am I supposed to know what it means?
It's, it's just, it's a term for painting. You know what it is? It's like, it's like, it's like Tommy's Park in Portland. It's, it's like, and I...
Christmas tree shop.
It's a Christmas tree shop. And it's, it's basically breaking up the wall.
Right. Yeah, but you could do that in other ways. I've seen some walls broken up by, by like a, almost like a sculpture kind of thing.
It's up to you guys.
Right, yeah, so that's what I'm saying, not a painting necessarily.
No, okay, fine, yeah. Well, I think. And did it translate me, okay?
Or the application of.
Of what?
Application of. Nencedly, it's kicking floor or trompe l'oeil out.
Your, your French little word on the blank wall.
Well, you want me to say painting?
On the application of.
Look it up in the definition, if you look in the definition, it specifically states what it is.
It's.
Are you gonna ask now, wait a minute?
Okay, let's not, let's not get off the, the table.
We had to have a definition and a scalling of it.
It's here, it's already there. And the definition is a prospective painter.
I can't fall because I don't have enough data on it.
So if we're gonna, you know, did you say?
I'm just saying, we shouldn't necessarily.
So you're, we're gonna find out the terminology. Structural elements?
I hadn't realized that there is.
Justland, landscaping.
Unintended consequences that by reason of that.
Okay, next item. Hey, Jamie brought out the, uh. Are we, what are we doing with that, uh? E, what?
E, I think, get rid of it.
Yeah. Right, I thought we did.
Yeah.
Jimmy suggested. He suggested, was everybody in favor of that?
Well, let's do that with a motion.
Well, what I was suggesting is get rid of that qualifying statement in that building's located in visual proximity. Because by default, this is gonna be under.
Two hundred feet.
Two E, so it would be under two hundred feet, so.
Already there.
So we just strike out that, that first part and.
But isn't, doesn't it already say that they have to be visually compatible?
It does.
Yep.
In, in the very first part of two, it says you have to be visually compatible.
Is that right?
That could be taken out, we leave it.
Well, but remember what these things are doing, these things are giving you criteria which you determine with visual compatibility.
Right.
That doesn't, this E doesn't help us at all.
I'm giving them a guideline?
Well.
That's a, that's a hapt, of.
Vertical, um, metal siding, you know, it's, it's.
That's the question, on the side facing there, you want metal siding, you know, next to your, your thing? Start off. Well, it's already painted, metal siding. Unless you wanna turn it on, put one, one color, one siding up, one, and then mismatch it going down.
Okay, you know, it's up to you guys, it really is.
I'll make a motion that we eliminate E from the listing.
Second, okay. All in favor? All opposed?
I use.
Marty, what are you in favor of?
Just neutral, all abstaining.
I'm abstaining, Marty opposed.
Because I think it's already covered.
Motion passes.
I mean, I think, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, next one is F, standard fulfilling station candidates.
Is that the standard we have now?
Yeah. Okay. Works for me. Okay, so much for definitions, uh, about a business district, uh, I think we gotta postpone signage for the next meeting. If that's gonna be a very lengthy discussion.
Yeah.
What did you put that in?
Yeah.
Just leave it at the top.
Um, can I ask for a planners report?
Yes, you can.
Uh, let's see, we have, we have, um. Excuse me, before you leave, thank you for attending, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Great, good.
Didn't come in all evening. Okay, uh, let's see, what do we have going? Uh, Kate's butter, Kate's butter has, uh, some good beachery this morning.
No.
They're proceeding, they're pouring the floor, they are also at this point, uh, have a target date of February. They have resolved their issues with the town of Old Orchard Beach. Ten point early, for the moment.
Till February.
That's right.
No, actually, okay, what?
So at this point, let's put it this way, we're, uh, landscaping for February. I have reminded them, and will remind them once more, that, um, uh, that landscaping is required to be installed prior to seeking a CO. And January is not the time for installation. So you might wanna think about that, but they've been struggling with their ten thousand gallon septic holding tank, which they pointed in in case six feet from the wall, which.
Eight feet from the wall, which.
Just cause another floor, right? Yeah. Because it's not on the plans, it's okay, I don't care, but it, 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 it was a, it was a element of progress for Jim. And it's, it's welcome news also. They're forging ahead, which is great, so February, we're looking at start date in.
Are they gonna come see us about a cow barn?
I have not heard a single thing since I delivered the news that they would still have to come to the planning board. Because it said it was an agricultural use in exact, and I said, no, we're in an agricultural demonstration project, conditionally used zone. And anything that occurs in there has to go to the planning board, as the planning board had ruled. So I have not heard from them since.
Are they being encouraged to seek an extension of the landscaping, if, you know, if their plan is that far out?
I, I have not heard that, you will, you will talk.
Because I, I think that might be proven.
Well, the problem is that you were, the, the surety that you used was a CO. And they can't start operating in February without a CO. You can't get a CO unless they put in the landscape.
Yeah, unless they can, unless they can negotiate some kind of a resolution to that.
Okay, well, I, I would imagine they would, would want to discuss that, because the site's not perfect.
Folks want it, that's all.
But they should discuss it sooner than.
Oh, they do like.
You can always post a law.
Propose a landscaping law.
Well, that's true, if you folks would let me do that on your behalf, I'll certainly negotiate a formal standard, I can do that. And we don't wanna discourage them from moving into February.
Right.
But we don't wanna discourage them from putting up a proper screening, so.
Well, we don't wanna lose our leverage.
That's right, yeah.
Well, it's snow, it's snow is, it's snow is the landscaping.
Oh, it isn't. It's not landscaping either.
White range, but I know.
You have anything else? Uh, yes, uh, we have, um, other activities that are going on. I've not heard from Southern Maine, um, I have talked to Southern Maine, they're gonna be changing their plan, uh, rather dramatically.
Southern Maine, yeah.
Well, they took a hard look at the ledge.
Okay, decided they didn't care to use that.
They're going, they're going, yeah, they're moving everything down the hill.
Okay.
Uh, so Paul said he's gonna be talking about it soon, and, uh, they'll be coming in.
They're not moving the drive?
No, the drive's staying the same, but it's gonna be, it's gonna be a pretty radical redesign. They're not gonna be coming back in. Uh, I have also, I have a number, I have more private ways, I have a stable, we're gonna have to talk about riding stables, and now we're gonna do that. That's a big hole in our zone awareness right now. There will probably be more and more riding stables that are commercial operations, but right now, we don't really regulate those very well.
Are they, I thought they weren't allowed in residential zones?
The R four is not a residential zone, it's a rural conservation zone. And that's, and we, all our riding stables, well, except for one, are in residential zones right now.
Yeah.
So, um, uh, in other issues, uh, complane committee, met again on, uh, on Tuesday. They have endorsed the DB one idea, the DB two, they disagree with some, on residential. They don't believe that residential should be excluded, uh, from the DB one, or it should be tied to business development, that everybody should have a right to put a single family home. Yeah.
I thought the purpose of the list is that.
Was that majority though, I don't recall that either majority.
Not a bit of majority, but certainly was a statement that was made very adamantly, but they haven't, I had a feeling it's gonna find its way into the write-up. Uh, we have a member of the committee right here, and maybe, maybe he would be better suited to speak to the, the issue than I. And we'll re-inflame all that discussion, but I don't recall. I don't, I don't recall saying, no.
It's just the other night.
Uh, what they, 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 there were a group of them pretty adamant that we shouldn't restrict anybody from being a single family, being on the property, no matter where it is. That could be a problem.
You're gonna have a single family home, just put a business there with it.
They, they don't wanna see that caveat, there could be a struggle we have with that.
I think that was just a couple of individuals, so that would.
Well, I think then we're gonna have to make that very clear, because the board's gonna need to know what.
Yeah.
Because we, we are gonna have to, we also had a little bit of conflict in our own, I didn't wanna bring this up, but we do have a little conflict in our own awareness, which I will address next. But, uh, the conference of planning committee has actually decided to categorize, um, districts, uh, growth zones, or districts, I mean, gonna be in three different, three different categories. Residential, mixed use, or commercial. And commercial, as they're proposing, will be only the BI district, and, um, all the business districts will be mixed use. And all the rest will be residential, that's what they're proposing right now. They have five for sewage districts, simply, and one through N five, um.
M one is just.
Mixed use.
Yeah, it's just because it's the DB one, DB two, or just for sake of discussion.
Right. And they're very, and they're very encouraged, they're very encouraged by the, uh, by the gateway, the northern gateway on Route One, they're very, very supportive of that one. Feel that should be given a lot of, a lot of attention by the planning board. Uh, we haven't gone really into town, we haven't really gone into town house, or.
Just started.
Just really started. But it's been going along fine, and the next meeting, they want, well, it's not the next, yeah, the next meeting is, they want a joint meeting.
I don't know if she was gonna.
No.
It's not the next meeting.
No, next time.
No, the next meeting is not.
I visit the.
The next meeting is not gonna be a joint meeting, Frank, yeah, we, we, Dawn had a couple more things we wanna go over, and then that one.
Give me a minute.
I visit the B.
Yeah. See ya. And, uh, and what, they wanna have a meeting with us, they wanna have a joint meeting with us at some point, we'll see these issues. Right now, there's nothing really going, except for the residential and the, and the commercial district, and identifying commercial districts as mixed use. There's not really a lot of conflict and support.
Does, does that mean we get to dictate what your house looks like, since we have design standards in the DB one?
There ain't no flat roof.
So that's the DB two. It's the DB one.
And it can be fifty feet tall.
Actually, it does not say you can't have a flat roof, guys, it says you'll put a cornice on it.
Yeah, you can't.
You can have a flat roof, it's not a problem.
And it can be fifty feet tall.
Can be fifty feet tall, it's a big bloody building.
Yeah.
I don't think we're gonna have a scale.
Anything that's going on.
Probably a problem, Frank.
Mike, what's going on?
Uh, there's a whole bunch of things going on, and, uh, we're working on the TIF districts right now. Um, I'm working with, uh, the guys from the seasonal cottages to work on that TIF district. That will be coming to the public, uh, probably starting maybe November, and we're probably looking for February vote on that. So we can get into the ground on both projects in the spring. It's gonna be a, a really interesting thing, and you know, asking about sewer, more about sewer will be forthcoming. How are we gonna finance it?
Do TIFs have to get approved by the town vote, or is it just?
It has to be approved by both the town vote and by the commission of, of economic and community development.
So do we vote him first for the?
No, we're gonna go, no, we go, we have to submit, the, the application we submit has to be, um, complete, with the public hearing and the vote. Right, yeah, tell me about it. And we, in order to get in, get this done, we have to do it in February, which means we've got a hell of a lot of work to do.
You're also working the CMP one, right?
No, we're gonna take them both for the voters at the same time, they're actually gonna be connected, it's gonna be a connection between the two of them, so. Uh, 'cause Jim's, you're doing the, uh, you're doing the seasonal cottage ones, it's gonna be overlap. It's actually gonna strengthen the CMP work. Because Smitty, who's the state, who's the person who's overseeing this for the state, has, has a little bit of a, a problem understanding how, uh, first do a tack engine, it's important on the power line to save it, so.
Say that again?
Is that for a wheel truck?
No.
So why is it important? Well, water supply.
That's right.
Got to have that. She, she's like, I'm having a hard time solving this. Hey, Jim, what can we do, man? Let's, 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 let's get some, get, get overlap during the district, so I can sell the, the fire engine to Smitty. Because, quite frankly, that, that CMP, the CMP, uh, TIF is gonna generate about two point five million dollars over this thirty year, uh, time period. Which is more than enough to staff everything you need, everything the department needs for vehicle replacement, and quite frankly, could, um, could provide also financing. If we do it incrementally, instead of going out to bond, I know this is a tough one to cheat, but if we do it incrementally, and we don't spend like half a million dollars on debt service, we'd also probably have enough money to put on the second one, the other bag. We've got enough money to put that bag that we need on that firehouse. Well, the only problem is, in order to do that, we gotta get rid of that town hall, so, whoops.
But, you know, we, for, for those of you that didn't get to decide what, what the proposed free land is, free land is free land.
Yep.
The cost of developing it is not free.
And the reason why it's free?
That's right.
And that's why it's actually gonna be more suitable for business or for, for, for commercial development than it is for municipal.
But.
It's much more valuable for that.
I, I understood from bond that we could get TIF money for a fire station.
We, we can.
So we'll put it.
We're gonna put it, we'll put it next to what the city's ever should propose it.
Put it down where the, where the, I wanna say the dump is, but that's not the proper terminology today.
Transfer station.
Transfer station.
And convert it.
And use that fire station for a town hall.
That would work. Where would my office be upstairs?
No, you can put it on the second floor with it. We're gonna get TIF money to build a new fire station, we're not gonna get TIF money to build a town hall.
I'll, I'll tell you, I don't know where he's giving the TIF money for the new fire station, because I'm only looking over the six hundred thousand, but let's see, I still.
Well, is that what, is that what the TIF money was? He's spending money twice.
Yeah. We have to have a talk, obviously.
He, he just said that there was opportunity.
There was an opportunity, that's the proper word, I'm sorry.
I mean, there is an opportunity, look, the, the money is a fixed amount of money. How do you wanna allocate it?
Yeah.
You know, the reason why we can, the, the fire station is not important, and it has nothing to do.
Don't tell him it's not important.
He, he knows what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Fire station has nothing to do with the CMP thing, unless we say it's for housing the specialized equipment we're using to protect the CMP in the maritime season. Yeah, we're stretching taffy here.
Oh, yeah.
Well, is that?
It's so far they're buying it.
Is that the four we live with the water pistol?
That's the beginning.
It's a super soaker.
It's a super soaker, and, uh, oh, and by the way, tell the chief that the, uh, the green squad truck already has been sold.
Okay.
So.
Were there any, um, stipulations on the gift of land to the town?
I don't know, to be honest with you.
I thought I'm aware of it, it was not restricted.
I didn't think.
I thought part of it was supposed to be used for ball fields, or.
It's part of recreation.
Oh, they suggested.
Yeah, the plan, it was, in the preliminary plan, there is some greenery for a ball field. But the overall site leaves a lot to be desired for the.
Access on Route One is very, you know, there's a big valley, and it goes away, and you have to go a good six hundred feet before it's leveled ground. And, you know, that's very.
And then, beyond that six hundred feet, start getting into swampland.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's room to put a, to put a, you know, a, a building, but the concern is, there's ledge underneath there, so, you know, these are. Townhouse isn't gonna be on a foundation, but you still gotta, you still gotta blast to lay up a slab, and there's a lot of construction cost there, so.
You know the area well, because you.
Yeah, you worked it.
Right?
It's the area where you went to.
Very, very minimally.
Okay.
But you still want more than I do.
Well, what, what is the?
I mean, I remember it being a little spot. I mean, I remember it being a little spot there, but.
What is the status of DuBois livestock, now that they've lost their appeal, are they gonna be back in front of us?
Maybe twenty-one days.
Twenty-one days.
Right.
We'll find out after that.
Okay, well, after the twenty-one days, or they have twenty-one days to come back?
They're saying they have a deal, then they're turning to their appeal.
Oh, their appeal, so they're appealing.
No, don't know if they're appealing.
No, no, twenty-one days left.
To appeal.
Well, do they have, whether they exercise that or not, do they have the ability to come back to the board and reapply for their composting operation?
The composting operation right now is licensed, going away till the next year.
Right. So, is, was their license that expired?
Their license, uh, it, the license that expired was the, uh, great.
Yeah, DuBois motors.
Oh, I thought it was the compost.
Motors, and the compost, and that's a major, and the great.
Yeah, but I thought it, it had expired, so that's not an issue.
No, the, the issue is, no, the, the composting facility is not, whether or not they've actually implemented the DEP permit they received is the issue, if they have, then there's an issue with the town. So, they still have to meet this terms of their, of their, uh, permit, is issue, that we still don't have those voiding, we don't have, we haven't done any inspection. And that's what we wanted to do last November, and now we're coming up on it again, and, uh, so it's been over a year, so it could be almost, if you don't do it in November, we're gonna be two years in, which, on, on the sound inspection, so.
Uh, question, DuBois auto, wasn't too long ago that we, it was renewed when we had to go get, uh, Claude to turn out about the berm, or this, that, and everything else?
Yeah, it was renewed in June, I mean, it was, uh, approved in June.
So it's not.
So it expired in June.
Yeah, but about three years ago, it's what.
Yeah, it was three years ago.
Three years ago.
That's a three years.
Okay. I was just thought it was a couple, about a year last year.
It feels like it, doesn't it? Feels like, it was three years ago.
And if it helps, wow.
Uh, no, that's, that's about it, we don't, that's enough, I expect.
The champagne building's looking great.
It does look nice, doesn't it?
Yeah.
They did that in record time. In terms of approvals.
I think it's pulled, it was on that corner.
I think it's, uh, I, I think that's what got the, uh, the complaint committee excited, because that's a real, that's a defining structure in that area. I think it's gonna shape the way, the direction of that, that area develops, and the property owners, as, as you know, they've been in front of us, are very much in favor of this creating that district, and I've been talking to the, uh, the town manager about going for some MUCF grants, and some street skate improvements, and that'd be huge, make that bridge look a little better than it does right now. Uh, and the entry, move, move the entry to where it is, which is by Justin Time, that's, on the, just on the other side of Justin Time, that's where the town line is. It's not on this side, it's on the far side of the, uh, the bridge, it's on the north side of the bridge. So, uh, I think that, uh, I think champagne's gonna make a big difference, so. Um, and that's all I have, we still are very, very light, I have no pending, um, subdivision applications, I have one pending private way. And, uh, I don't have anything moving on the horizon, I'm not talking to anybody about any developments now. Jim is out straight, he's got more building permits than he could shake his leg at. We're not at the point now where we have to worry about whether, uh, we're reaching the limit on the, uh, on the growth ordinance, but, I'd say he's got about twenty-five new builds.
Yep, residential building permits? So they gotta be single family lots, just get it all over the place.
Yeah, what's happening is you've got, you've got a lot of inventory that's being consumed right now. And as that, existing lots, good lots, um, proceed, then, uh, as they get gobbled up, there's gonna be more and more demand for more lots.
Most.
You're just a hot place.
These are not spec built.
These are not spec built.
Well, his son, his son.
His son took out five permits.
Yeah.
So. For, for.
By that place?
Took out five permits.
He can't, he can't build until he connects the road.
He can't, no, he can build forty units before he can. Yeah.
Uh, no, it was, once phase one is full.
Right.
Yeah, and phase one is full.
No.
Yeah, phase one goes to the first cul-de-sac.
Right.
Phase one goes to the first cul-de-sac, anything after, he couldn't build on phase two until he got phase one done. Phase one is full, now he has to connect, you better look at that, cause I got the condition, but he had to connect to Liberty Acres, once he started building on phase two.
I thought it was based on numbers, unless you put in something specific in your approval. If you didn't put something specific in your approval, it's the number of watts you can build in the, in, in the project.
No, I think that was.
It was something like what you were saying, because, because the fact is, when they turned out, started putting it together.
Yeah.
They did the phase one, and then they can continue along with the road and everything else, but along that lines, what Dan was saying. Cause it was, because they didn't wanna go even into phase three or something, no, because they hadn't negotiated or anything else, something about the right way, and you did Liberty Acres or whatever.
That's done now, it's fine.
Yeah, but. To my knowledge, that was done.
Yeah, that's done. I know the landowner, that's done.
That's what I was implying. All right, well, I'll look it up, but I, I know the subdivision status more convenient than that, allows.
We were concerned with, you know, houses being way down in one area, and not having, having, you know, access for way out, way away, so. I'm pretty sure, I'm like ninety-nine percent sure, we put that in one of the conditions.
So how many permits you took over that?
Five.
These traffic, these traffic, I don't wanna load it.
Boy, you have fifty lots under it.
Yeah, I know. Okay, why are they gonna fix one of them, speaking of which, are they ever gonna do, do any connection there?
Yes, they are next year. It's worth the.
There was a comment that's posted in the paper about speed bumps or, or medium strips.
Where is that?
I think you should say they have more.
The whole way?
Speed tables on, on one eleven.
Oh, boy.
So, so that, so that when you hit the rubble strip and you wake up, you're gonna jerk to the left automatically, cause you're used to it. Right into oncoming.
Perfect. Hey, I, I hear that's, uh, someone went on a trailblazing episode over at Wayne Perry's place the other night, two hundred and four hundred feet into the trees.
Oh, I wasn't there, I missed it.
That's, I'm gonna be working to do that. I mean, really, that's heavy grass you go through, and into these trees, so.
Well, we had one on, on one eleven with, I don't know how much this lady had had to drink, she hit a tree, she left the road, hit a tree fifteen feet in the air, and turned her car around sideways and was facing the way she had come.
And she lived.
And she lived. Of course, when you're that loose, effectively.
What happened on, what happened on, uh, Downing Road today?
I don't know, I wasn't home and, and, uh, when the call came in.
Is that a fire, was that a? No, it looked like a tractor trailer.
On Downing Road?
Came off and, and moved a telephone pole right along the side between the, the cab and the trailer, thirty to fifty feet off of the road, but it was still upright.
Did it have logs on it?
No, I don't think so. Is that what they're walking? It was, it was just one of these, but it wasn't like you hit it and knocked it.
I'm gonna make a motion to a chair.
All in favor?
Yeah.
I had public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You, you had to change.
I asked about that, but you were told for a public. They were late.
One more chance. I'm gonna turn this off before you say something.